I'd like to call over this meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education.
Good evening, District One, Amber Franceski.
Here.
District Two, Amy Carter.
Here.
District Three, Bill McGurk.
Here.
District Four, Chris Poole.
Here.
District Five, Randy Moses.
Here.
It's now time for our pledge of allegiance and their role in the Bronx. You're right.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the government, which is the case, what makes it under our law, and its principle, and everything that is strong.
Thank you very much. It's now time to swear in our new student board members going marching on for your thrill of your life and looking forward to serving with you this year.
I do solemnly swear or I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue as citizen thereof.
And so will I. As citizen of there.
And that I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The office of member of the Mercer County Board of Education.
Of the Mercer County Board of Education.
According to laws.
According to laws.
And I do further solemnly swear.
And I do further solemnly swear.
That since the adoption of the present Constitution.
Since the adoption of the present Constitution.
I, being a citizen of this state.
I, being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel with a deadly weapon.
Have not fought a duel with a deadly weapon.
Within this state nor out of it.
Within this state nor out of it.
Nor have I spent or accepted the challenge.
Nor have I spent or accepted the challenge.
To fight a duel with deadly weapons.
To fight a duel with deadly weapons.
Nor have I acted as a second.
Nor have I acted as a second.
In carrying a challenge.
In carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted.
Nor aided or assisted.
Any person thus offending.
Any person thus offending.
So help me God.
So help me God.
May I please add a motion to a previous meeting here?
I'd like to.
About a second, please, Mr. McGurk with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Pruitt, second.
On favor.
So as of this evening, we don't have anyone signed up for public participation, so we will go ahead and move on to our reports. And first up will be our finance officer.
So our grand jury cap for July 2025, our year-to-date actual is on here. I just want to point out that we are using our budgeted numbers for the beginning balance in here, so it has the little asterisks beside it so you'll see that as far as our weekly running tour report goes until we have everything finalized by July end of November. So our year-to-date actual is 9.25 million on the revenue side, which at this point in time shows a 1% decrease from last fiscal year. We have budgeted 30.96 million on the revenue side. All of our end-of-year inquiries are still in the process of finalizing. All of that should be done in the next couple of months. On the expense side, our actuals are 1.6 million. So the largest majority of those for the month of July were the KISTO bus paid off at the end of that. Then we agreed in the month of June to go ahead and do it in July. That was $600,000, $700,000. So that was a large portion of the expenses in the month of July. But we do have those paid off, which is great. We say close to $30,000 in interest on that, paying those off early, so we didn't get that finished. And then we have budgeted on the expense side 26.8 million. And so because we pay those KISTO bus leases off, we'll see under the categorical spending that our district level supports a 28.33%, and that's why it calls my category. We are, we just had our first large payroll of the year happen on August 15th. So that's where all of our teachers, all of our support staff that worked during the school year start getting paid for the first time. So we still have some new employees that just started with us, literally first day of school or within first couple of days of school, that start getting paid on August 30th. So we're trying to get all of that into our systems. But at this point in time, we're talking on a wall on finance for it. Are there any questions?
So all of our buses now are paid off? We don't owe any money.
We don't. So anything you purchase from this backdoor, if we're purchasing it right now, then that's only when we'll be paying any interest on it. Thank you all.
Your report, thank you. Next will be our instructional report, Jason McCaus.
Yeah, I just wanted to give everybody a little update about the start of the year. And we had a great, we had a great start of the year. Our schools, our principals, everything started planning for their instructional goals and their, you know, their plan for the year. They start that back in January and February. So just to give you a little update about what goes on in the instructional world for the first month of school, we did have a great series of professional development at the beginning of the month. A lot of that was based on the, a lot of them, or some of that was based on the Ron Clark things and some of the business that we construction teams too last year, over this last year. So we built a lot of that into our trainings and things, and we feel like that's going to be really beneficial for us this year. It's going to be a big year for that. There was also a lot of reading and math trainings that we continue to focus on and continue to grow in those areas. For this point here, our instructional goals will remain, most of them will remain the same as they have the last five years when I've been up here and talked. We'll try to get all of our grade levels at 60% proficiency or above, make sure all our classes are probably 75% of our kids are reading, rote classes, and have less than 10% novice in any, in any subject in any area. One thing that will change was our goal is to get our ACT scores up to the 20s. As you may have heard, there will be, there's predictability to change in that from ACT to the SAT in this state. And that is a big deal. It's a big change, obviously, and that came about pretty abruptly in the June.
And then?
There is, there is actually a protest in action, so the progress on that is held up. So there's really no more news on that, but there is a really good chance that a lot of the testing for juniors and a lot of the testing, the preparation we do, will change and be based around what SAT moving forward. So we'll learn more about that. We did receive the first test scores back, individual test scores back from last year. That stuff, the specifics of that, I'm not allowed to speak about yet, but there were some, still a lot of very encouraging things for us again, and we look forward to, next month, we'll get the next kind of step in batch and some more designations and things like that, some more results that are school-wide. And so we've already been working on that, schools have definitely been working on that and seeing what they can, they can take away from that. And we're really excited about that progress too, we feel like it's going to be another year of, you know, good motivation moving forward. And so, so yeah, next month's meeting, we should be able to make a pretty solid report about some of those things and start talking about some of those results. So universal screening testing has already started. It should be going this week or moving into next week, so all the schools, pre-creating or K-creating will be involved in that. So a lot of things going on, and it was a great start to the year, and we look forward to getting this first time and getting on the ground really well.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
If this changed from ACT to the SAT, what's the major difference of, that it would mean to us as far as what we do?
It would be significant, honestly, just because we have an entire, and I'm sure Mr. Flor will tell you about that, we have an entire plan, not through, you know, on that, that is really geared towards preparing kids for that. A lot of our incentive plans are geared towards that, you know, but we did pretty intensive tracking on that over the years. So it would be a major, major change. I mean, it will be a big change in how we do business. Obviously, they're two different tests, and they're really, accepted regionally differently. You know, SATs accepted are real, are more widely used in other areas. That's a different test. It takes about, or less time. There's not, I don't think there's an actual concrete science score again, if there is. So there are some differences, and we'll just have to learn about those things. And again, I think that the decision was, like I said, it was, it was at the end of June, we were, we were given little leeway as far as noted about it. But they do say that once the protest session is over and it has been, the dispute has been settled, that they have prepared a lot of trains, they're going to be a lot of training and stuff available, because they know people, especially high school folks here, a lot of what they do around that, a lot of the things that they buy, they buy structural items that teachers use and stuff like that to try to help them basic type questioning and things like that. So it really will, it will be a little bit of a test to switch over and be prepared for that, try to do the best that possible, because there's going to be a lot to learn.
Is there any commentary, yeah, is there any commentary on why they wanted to change?
The way it was described, it was just a bidding, it's just a contract, one contract gave to the next one who has picked up, and somebody has to have the contract on that as far as testing, college test or duty, and so.
Historically, I know not every student has had to take the SAT versus ACT, but I know that there are some that have not had taken it. Do you see that the scoring, the ones that are students that have taken it, is it similar in levels?
I'll be honest with you, I do not. I'm just not, and I probably, a lot of people are hoping I am, or it will be, it'll be a new language to learn for a year. So I honestly, I wouldn't tell you that.
So guessing what, I'm guessing you're going to have to have some kind of cut-off plan for students or high school parents, don't have to be a group that, okay, this is the new group, my grandfather, these, this group, or using ACT methods and then?
We're assuming there'll be guidance on that.
Okay.
Because there are some things in the, some schools give ACT all the soft ones. They give it to the junior as a mandatory year, and then they give a retake, and they say some kids take it three times, they have system table three times, so like I said, there'll have to be a lot of guidance on that.
Hope, hope there's a difference in acceptance for our students, and then between the two, I mean, are they, are the colleges?
As far as I know, I may be wrong, Kentucky is still a testing optional, the, the, the state colleges and things, I'm almost positive that was in some, they're still a testing optional, so you don't even have to submit it.
Right, there's a lot of colleges that.
Yeah, so it's still an optional, so it's not the only mandate to get into a program where father shut them on the chance. I think that Kentucky is still a state that has testing optional, except for university and things, so.
It can help you, I think.
Sure.
And it can answer.
Correct.
Right.
So there'll be a lot to learn on that. There'll be a lot to learn on that, no question. Yes, yes, total, total change.
That's, that's big news.
It was, it was. Any other questions?
Thanks, Jason.
Okay.
Personnel report we shared with everyone prior to this meeting, I think we've had our opportunity to review that. So we will move on forward with our cybersecurity update and Jerome calls. See.
Hello, everyone. So August is Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and KDE has asked all of the CIOs, directors of technology, to brief the boards of education, basically verify that we understand and are aware of the procedures and safeguards or data breaches for students and staff, and any kind of personal information that gets breached. So that's been the law since 2015, the Personal Information Security and Breach Investigation Procedures and Practices Act, or people call it Hospital Five, if that's easier. So since then, there's been a series of requirements and procedures that we have to follow in the event of any kind of a data breach. Now, my personal idea on this is preventing, right? If you never have a data breach, then you never have to follow all of these procedures. Now unfortunately, the first week on the job, I was faced with a security breach, and I've gone through every single one of these procedures, and I can promise you, since then, I have taken measures to make sure that that won't happen again. So there's a lot of things we do that I don't feel comfortable discussing in a public forum. I'd be glad to do it in a closed session, where I can go into a little bit more of the details of how we monitor sign-ins and what we do with suspicious law evens and all of the actual processes that we use to try to keep everybody's information safe. But like I said, the purpose of this is just to assure you all that I am aware of the Data Security and Breach Notification Best Practice Guide. It's an 11-page document that we're supposed to follow in the event of a breach, and of course, best practices to follow to prevent such breaches. There are certain time limits, some things we have to do immediately, some things we have to do within 72 hours, forms we have to fill out. You'd be surprised that who has to be notified of any kind of data breach. I was very surprised that the Commonwealth, I'm sorry, the Kentucky Department of Library and Archives is one of the six or seven people departments that have to be notified of any data breach, so. And through this, the one thing I did want to share with you though is that the most common target, this is probably going to be surprising, the most common target is the social security numbers of students. And you can think, well, what good is it to have a social security number of a young child? They've got 15 years before anybody is going to be doing any kind of check-in on their credit report to see if there's any data breach. So hackers try their best to get social security numbers of students any way they can, so that they can actually start scams and using those numbers. And the problem with that is, almost everything we do with student records involves social security numbers, foster care stuff. I see forms all the time where they're requesting social security numbers of students. And so KDE is really trying to crack down on that and trying to come up with ways to get rid of, anytime we don't need to use a social security number, get rid of it, delete it from old students. There's no reason why do we have archives of all our previous student records with all of these available numbers that somebody can hack into? So most of it's common sense, but that is one thing that I definitely want to work with other departments in our district and try to make sure that if we don't need a social security number for any kind of thing we're doing, don't include it, don't put it in unless it's absolutely required. But it is required for things like keys money, or I think it's called Kia now, is it right? Did they change the name? You know, that's important, students want to get the money from SAT and ACT and all the things they've done, it's depending on their social security. So we're aware of contradiction, and we're definitely working on it. So like I said, basically, I would be more than happy to share details of what we do and how we do it, but this is just, we've been asked to just let you guys know that I know what I'm supposed to be doing, I know what I'm supposed to do in the event of a breach, which never happens, and we know people that we're supposed to notify in the event of a breach. Any questions? So the next time you have that multi-factor authentication and you're, ah, you have to do this, this is why, you know, on any kind of student records or anything hacked. And trust me, I don't know if you guys are getting this email, but there's, today alone, there were 50 emails that were sent out to staff members pretending to be Mr. Hoover, that were trying to get staff members to click on the document that took them to a link. So luckily, we were aware of it, we deleted it, but that's, that's what we face on a daily basis, so.
Are we, are we required to have cyber security insurance? In case of a data breach?
We do have it under, as part of our under oath policy. Now whether we're required to have a special rider or not, we're not. That is usually, Mr. Hoover might be able to help me out on that. Yeah, I, we, we looked it up for us, we did. We do have a, a coverage, I don't know, as much coverage we have, right, but we do have that as part of our just general overall insurance plan. There are other districts that have a special cybersecurity rider, where they intend to, they pay a lot more for specific increases in caps. That's not something that we've ever felt the need or have done, and a lot of that comes from our belief of board attorney. I believe everyone's that will very often make that determination. So yes, we're covered. That's part of our under oath policy.
Nelson? Very much, guys. Appreciate your hard work. Next will be our student board member, Morton Star.
Good evening. This summer, I had the opportunity to experience two amazing programs that helped me grow both academically and personally. My summer began with a trip to Washington DC, an opportunity provided by the Kentucky Electric Cooperatives. While there, we learned about energy efficiency options and then what role cooperatives play in supporting Central Kentucky and communities across the US. We also had the chance to visit the White House and meet with Kentucky legislators, where ignorance hands off how they're working helps keep our state's cooperatives stronger. After returning from DC, I attended the Governor's Scholar Program, a highly selected program where I was honored to spend five weeks at the Murray State University. My focus area was cultural anthropology, where we studied the slope of culture and how something as simple as cooking or sharing a meal can strengthen relationships and bring people together. Each week, my class cooked together, and I got to see how it's created stronger bonds and create a sense of unity. In addition to my focus area, I also attended a leadership seminar, which emphasized the importance of taking care of ourselves, avoiding burnout, and being mindful of how we treat others. We learned to respect different perspectives and ideas, which taught me to be a more thoughtful leader in a team. I also attended a general studies class that focused on artificial intelligence, where we explore the exciting possibilities AI brings, as well as the ethical changes and potential negative impacts it could have in the future. GSP brought together more than 340 students across Kentucky, and even though it came from different backgrounds, this program emphasized community and connection. During this, I created a whole new network of friends and peers, while also gaining new perspectives and skills that I know I will benefit, me knowing. Overall, my summer was both exciting and meaningful. Between DC and GSP, I had the chance to learn about leadership, community, and the importance of working together, whether that's through government cooperatives or even just sharing a meal. Most importantly, GSP is an incredible opportunity and program that deserves to be funded and supported because it provides students across Kentucky with life-changing opportunities for growth, connection, and leadership that will continue to benefit our state's workers to better.
Sounds like you have a busy summer. I don't see a chance, you have to make that picture to Murray State. Thank you very much. Next will be our elementary school update, Trace Creek.
Good evening. A nice new video for you guys this week, for this month. It sounds like perfect for summer, we're here without. We're awesome. Your own video coming from the east door to the west, the 1.7 intersection there, start seeing the building come together. This shot's coming from the front. You've noticed the gymnasium, this was taken a few days ago, your gymnasium now has, and this video has rafters, as of today, it's got all the steel decked on it. So that roofie is coming together. The roof on the back section of Area E, I'll just keep talking as you all watch the video. We have finally gotten the moisture that we've all talked about for the last few months up to the level that they can start proceeding with it, it got to the level that is acceptable to proceed. So starting Monday, the roofing contractor will be on site, start putting the roof on that section, they'll also start putting the roof on Section A, which is the closest to the roof, that's got the gable on it. So we'll start putting on two different types of roof next week. And as I said, the gymnasium there is already decked. Just give you a quick overview, as you enjoy the few minutes in the video. It says contractors have completed all the storm grates, or have continued with all the storm grates and storm lines. They completed all that stone waste on the left side, as you can see in the bottom corner. That's going to be your bus parking, bus drop off, your teacher parking, that's it. They completed all the underground electric over there, so all your pole bases is in around your parking lot, sites are really coming together. They continue, continued with all the rough ends in the areas that's got the roofs on them, but Area A, which you can see there is changing colors. We'll change colors on you a couple of times with the project. We'll start out gray, then we'll turn into this yellow color, then you'll also turn into a brick color at the end. As I said, they started setting the joists in Area C, which is the roof joists. They completed all the PVC roof on Area D, and they completed all the metal studs in Area D, which is actually, I got it, it's cheesy, I'm sorry, is your first grade section. And if you notice in the picture, in Area A, we'll start out from where you can see it, so it would be hidden back, but they started with all the stones, it's going to come up under the windows where your brick takes off. And that's really, that's really good, my opinion, is the brick selection of a product that you got there. Starting in the next month, we're going to try to continue the waterline exploration out the roadway. You'll drive by, you can see that we're still, we're still working, construction up there, but it's moving along as expected. They'll complete all the metal studs in Area A, so we'll be about wrapped up with that, start ready to initiate and work toward drywall. We'll complete the electrical rough end, or we'll start the rough ends in Area B, continue those over here, they'll complete all the metal decking installation on that, that area over the gymnasium, then back to the right, get this to tie A and B there together. They'll start the installation of the trusses in Area C, which is starting down all the way in the section between your cafeteria and the back wing of the school. And as I said, we'll start installing the PVC roof on Area E and the metal, standing seam metal roof on Area A, whether permitted, which is not, and they're out, we'll be doing that, or they'll be there, so we'll start that. Any questions?
Did notice, did notice a stone on across the structure.
Yes, that's an attention gear, isn't it?
It's really, it's really going to be an attention gear when they start getting the brick up.
Yeah, and, and, and once, once the project finishes out, you get the, you get the difference between the grades out front, the grass growing and the stone and the brick and the elder brick, they'll, they'll really stand out. I think it's going to be a very, very nice, so it's, you know, it's not just a brick from the ground up. That was, that was a good choice.
So from the sightlines from the road, like I know there's a pile where they dug out the waterline, but it sprays it up a little bit, like, will that be flat?
It will not be completely flat. It will transition a little bit from the road down toward the, the school, because from the elevation, the road elevation is higher than the school.
Okay. Well, I mean, so if they go down, like, you'll be able to drive a little over and not see a little corner or hill, you actually see?
Yes, they, they, the contractors have started, they're using the masser from the school wheel and toward the road, but they, they're getting what's convenient in fact. They haven't done the final grade in the area.
Where the fence is, it's going to be?
Where the old fence comes out, you know, where the old fence is, that'll come out, and there'll be some slope grading down there.
If you notice, on the right, the right end of the building, about that, about along that, that area, they're taking, they're propping it down now, they're taking.
What, four, five, five or six? Four, three, yeah, yeah. You know, I, this is.
That's where the hogging off over to the, the place that resides.
For so long, it's always looked like we've been looking down and holding, and we've been trying, they've been trying to get everything done, of course, all that attention system, one over that market hall and the way out to get that done, and have it moved over to the right or east side, where that retention, that retention funds going to go and start moving back across, removing, you know, those access poles. So it's, if you go in there and start, or look in there, it'll start to flatten out real well. real well. Good.
And it looks good, it's coming together.
All we have is finish it, right?
That'd be good. We appreciate that.
That's the hell.
Finish it. Finish it when you said it, finish it.
We're pushing everybody hard for finish.
You're going to get a break in the winter next year, it's going to be lucky.
Well, we don't want too much of a break. The heat break will probably help some, and we don't want it to start raining on us again. We'll double that blood. All right, thank you all. And if there's any questions, you know, I appreciate it. Hey, I'm just getting word off the back of the table.
Thanks. Next will be our secret tenors report, Mr. Fur.
Good evening, just a few things here. Opening day, open houses, well-attended opening day on August 4th, as Mr. Calus was talking about. Went really well, and we did beat 1% better, and I've already got some emails back, and all those were changing, changing some things that they did, the classroom rooms were having all the lessons that we need to read so far. First five days of school, we've already got the first week under our belt, five days are in the books, and they went great, so I need to knock on wood that it's best to do this, because it's been years past since I've been here, so it's been really good. Hats off to administrators, and teachers, and all our staff that's made that work that way. One of the great things is all of our certified positions were filled with 10 days before the first day of school, when kids come, so that was, I know a lot of schools are supposed to stay in that same position, and that's attributed to you all with the salary schedule and recruiting those retaining great staff members. Last week, I took a couple days and gave a tour to our new element, and our new elementary school with our current elementary teachers, preschool through second grade, and I didn't realize how, how bad they wanted to get into the school and see their new school, so they were excited. And then I learned that the most excitement came with the hard hat that they got to put on and the picture they got to take with, or the ticket, or wherever it was. They were really excited about putting that hard hat on to walk out there, because they thought it was really neat. But no, they really enjoyed the tour, and they're excited about next year this time. And we've already been talking about next year, like, we've always done opening day at the high school, but next year, we're already starting to plan, starting the day after the opening day this year, we're already starting to plan that opening day at the new elementary school next year, so that'd be pretty neat, because of the new doors, just to start to kick off the new, the new year at the new elementary school. If you all are inter-county energy customers, you all opened your mailbox, like I did, we got Kentucky Living out, and I pulled it out the other day, the mailbox, and there's Norwalk, and she's on the front cover, talking about a Washington DC trip, so I enjoy reading that book. And so that's, that's pretty neat to see, our new student board member on the front cover of the magazine. Academics, I know Mr. Calus worked on a lot of that, and of course, we can't say anything, but we've got some really exciting news coming up, probably not till December now, because of the science test and KD, the same goes, we'll be ready till December. But we're excited about those scores. In the arts, I know you all went by the high school this summer in the blazing heat and sunshine, and saw the marching band out there, I know they're gearing up, they've got their competitive skating coming up starting soon. And athletics, congratulations to, is Jada here? Okay. He had a match. And congratulations to Jada Anderson, the boys golf team, they won the first championship of the year from Mercer County, and he won the class 2A, they won the class 2A section championship, and they go to Owensboro to compete in state. Don't forget our first bowl, our first football game, which our bowl game is this Saturday night. There's two games, we play the second game at 8:00 against Lexington-Tales Creek. And just a reminder for everybody, next month's board meeting is at the high school, don't forget. Okay, so at the high school next month, September, September, September. That's all.
Questions? Thank you very much, sir. Good first report for the school year. We'll move on to our consent agenda items, everyone's had an opportunity to look at and review those. I'll open the floor for any questions or discussion about any of the consent agenda items, I'm not sure if you have anything you want to bring to our attention.
I know we got surplus equipment on there, we had a bus, a bus run on there last month, and we didn't receive any bids for that, and so therefore, we'll just keep that in our reserve, in case we have a bus breakdown or we can use that. This is another bus, and it runs as well, so it's not like it's a scrap bus, so they can per se drop off. So we'll put that out to be it, if you want to approve that, in our consent items.
Do you want to have any questions? Bring the session up. If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Is Francesca going to motion, we have a second please?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, second, I'll vote. We have a couple of action items for our discussion coming up, and the first one will be the tax rates for 2025 and 2026.
So you all have this information for a little bit, because our state certified assessment actually listed to us on July 24th. And so on July 25th, I got all the information here for you, it's in the studio's boards, you have plenty of time to look at this. We had a tax hearing last Thursday, and so I'll just quickly go over some highlights, but basically, over the last 13 years, and that's taking the very first rate in 12, 13 school year, all the 24, 25 school year, our tax rate is only growing at 9 cents per $100 value, or assessed value on a $100,000 program means $80 more in that amount of time. So moving on, from that, we have our options for this year. Our compensating rate is 67.8 cents and 71.6 cents on real and residential properties. 4% increase rate is 7.5 cents and 71.9 cents. The same rate would be 71.6 cents, and the subception point rate would be 74.3 cents. And so, moving on down, also our monthly people tax rate is also 56 per $100 assessed value, so that would increase a little bit as well. And those rates are set by the state, they give you your maximum value, so we can always, like, looking back in our store, we'll take the max value here as well. Most districts, they will do on that one as well. So, as far as our revenue breakdown on those rates, as far as our compensating goes, our general fund revenue would be approximately 9.3 million. The 4% increase would be 9.74 million, and the same rate would be 9.7 million. So we do some adjustments based off our collection rate, which is staying around 97%. I did go back and look at our collection rates, just, I did it every year, just to make sure that we're staying on par with that, because we had fluctuated down a little bit back quite a few years ago, but we'll back up to about 97% collection rate. And then we did pay our sheriff's office a 2.25% commission rate as well. So all of our rates are here, and the revenue projected takes into consideration our 97% collection rate and the sheriff's office commission as well. So if you look at some comparisons here between compensating and 4% rate increase, between those two, and a 20-year difference between those two, it's a loss of like $29 million dollars or whatever. So you look linear, and linear doesn't look like a huge amount of money, but when you compound that amount of money over many, many years, because it grows off of each other every single year, and that's lost revenue forever, and you will never be able to gain that revenue back ever. That's where it really could hit your budget more and more, if you look at it that way. And then if you did a comparison between the 4% increase rate and then the same rate, it's over 20 years, it's a great 0.5 million difference. So as far as without additional revenue, no matter what that looks like, we use, we do take on additional revenue. Obviously, any kind of facility needs, so as we take on new bonds for construction, or any kind of facility upgrades ever, whether it be bonded or just paid for in our pocket, or anytime you pay for your school lessons or anything like that, all of those types of things do need obviously more revenue. Constructional support, we're still, you know, utilizing dollars for learning loss recovery, and we also have a lot of curriculums that we started in this fiscal year paying for that had previously been paid for with federal dollars, but we're not going to be receiving, that we were receiving during COVID times and that kind of thing, so we're having to pick those up out of general fund, right there. Staff raises, as we give those, which are great, thankful, as we go through staff numbers to receive them, but as we receive those raises, staff numbers, as we give those to our staff members moving on, obviously, that costs us more money, and that's an ongoing increasing cost to us, and we're going to get increased as far as those costs go. We have been able to get flexible supplies to our students for about six years now, and so, so far, we have been able to do that, and that has cost the district roughly $572,000 today. And then also, we picked up dual credit scholarships that we give to our juniors and seniors now. So that's a huge piece that we gave as well, and then every single year, we see fluctuations in federal and state dollars. And some of that is dependent on our enrollments, one of them is dependent on those budgets at the state and federal levels, and so we, you know, we set our own local rate, and so in order to do that, that is by setting the tax rate. So as far as how that looks in line in our budget, so as far as contingency rates look like, with the compensating rate estimation, this is based on the tenant budget numbers, because I'm still looking on where we budget, well, we'll approve next month. Looking at a 23.96% contingency, on the 4% rate, that would be 25.25% and at the same rate, 25.76%. And I just gave you some comparisons between nearby districts compared to last year's rates, and where we kind of ranked among those and what their rates were as well. Are there any questions?
One comment I'd like to make, and we can't stress this enough, is, and we've done it for you all, and approved, because where we want our graduates to graduate and have their first semester of college paid for, that we've always paid those first 15 hours. I don't know what other schools actually does that, so, you know, you all, with what you've done over the last few years and the finances, that, I still think we're the only school that pays for the first 15 college courses rather than going to our high school. So we appreciate that, of course, you mentioned the backpacks as well, that was really helps. Every, every family that sends their kids here, that they don't have to go and pay a lot of money for those back-to-school supplies. But you know what, there's an opportunity here, that back in 1920, 1920 school year, the tax rate here was 71.8. The last two years, it's been 71.6. We've got an opportunity for a third year row to keep the same rate, the same exact rate, which still puts us lower than what it was seven years ago, so I think, you know, the situation we're in, you know, all the great things happen, we've got the buses paid off, now we're doing a new construction, a new elementary school. You all done a great job with staff raises over the last four years, and looking at maybe building a new athletic stadium, all that considered, we're still unable to keep the rate the same. My recommendation would just be keep it the same as the last couple years, and then 71.6.
Okay, so Mr. Fur, what's your recommendation? Can I have a motion?
I have a motion.
To keep the same rate?
Yes.
Of 71.6. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to keep the same rate of 71.6, and I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Fur with the second, roll call, please.
District 1. Yeah. District 2, Amy Hart. Yes. District 3, William McGurk.
Yes.
District 4, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
District 5, Ray Morris.
Yes.
Up next, a live slide of a discussion, and a quick off-field location. That's here, we're starting, there's some options here.
She sent me an updated PowerPoint, so we've got two attachments. The second one was just added this afternoon, right now, we just, so I don't think there's a lot of difference between the two, but we left the initial one.
So the PowerPoint here is a little bit updated, it's, it's Russian information. I don't know. It's kind of, it's sort of like that.
Yeah, it's really pretty much almost.
So we're in very early beginning phases of taking off this project, so really working like a part left of program. We got a site survey a couple weeks ago, and we've been analyzing that, looking at the possible locations for where a venue could go. So we wanted to look at, there's three options with me today, I showed you the pros and cons, and, you know, just kind of see what the, what the differences would be, comparing the same variables, knowing that the track, the field, and the amenities will be the same, so like, taking that as the same cost for all three locations, the variable is the site itself, like what herb is needed, what utilities are impacted, so that's where the price is going to go up or down, the field itself will be the same in all the options. So, next one, please. So this is option 1, and I'm going to find where our syllabus will give you, who released the present pass.
So the first option we look at is out in front of the ice. This is a rather large area, a digital slope, this is also where the majority of your high school grade is school park, so you've got three outlets coming into that area, and there are three singles, because there's such a gap between the backside of those fans and the front side of the parking lot, because we need to keep those singles maintained and protected. Of all the three sites that we've looked at so far, this is the most cost-effective. It does have ideas of orientation on whether your players go for your home spectators, or if you have the west setting sun, or if you're to the east visitor, or the west setting sun, so they can make you want them. It does have direct access from the front of the school, it kind of sets up a potential for a very nice moment, linking from the front door of the school going through the parking lots and entering right, right on the backside of that grandstand, kind of division from Mercer County School, coming straight through that area, kind of a good key concept in that area. It is adjacent to the parking lot, you've got a lot of parking right there, right next to it, so you can have not only home, but visitors, even park at the softball field outlet, and have direct access to the visitors' dance, not a whole lot of room for potential crossover of your home visitors' pages. And creating, and this does have the least amount of effect, but we do believe that we can just in you in at this location without having to maintain those, you know, the grid. This site does have existing power, water, and sand area, very minimal other utilities are in the way of this stadium. There is a fiber line, but that fiber line is running between the back of those great fans and that parking lot, so we would just be crossing with that access walk from the parking lot to the stadium, so. The cons, it is right in front of the school. It, it will be the first time you see the shooter around the campus. However, it's not going to block you from 127, it was supposed to be that side angle from the front of the school, but it, it is what you're going to see near our past parking lot, it's the same. The other con of this hall is that shop, this is that small green triangle, basically north of the interior of the high school, they are not within the venue, they are in literally satellite, and that's still a close proximity. So those are two big kind of cons for this one. Before we go on, are there any questions about this site?
What about, is it, where the, where the sinkholes are, down in that little valley there, down there? What about the access, like sidewalks and things like that, from the parking lot to the the field? How would that be happen?
So you can kind of see the break where the front of your high school is, you can kind of see the break in those green spaces that kind of cuts through the parking lot. And is the center sidewalk access? The way that lines up at this number up here, that it crosses any of those singles. So we could build that up, add the singles on either side of that, and then now it'd just kind of be a land bridge across, and we would not be having to manually incorporate across the singles.
So you could put a tile on there for the water, if you.
We would do a bypass homework to allow that to kind of continuously kind of down mill down, so those singles will ever not start, not keep taking water. There is an outlet for water to kind of continue to get out.
Where are the singles? Can you show me?
There are three. There is a low depression right here, so we get close, but we can modify this block here in this area. You do have a storm line that comes from your building, daylight's here, and then it filters down in this low area. The second single is right here. You can kind of see the closed contours and they could like fall. You've got another storm line coming in, and then also discharging to that low area as well. The third one is not actually discharging water from your high school, but it is discharging water from this parking lot. It comes down here, it comes across, and then daylight's right here. Your overflow is right here. So if these ever back up right now, it's going to spill across here and come through the ball area and then down to the side. So that is critical to remain intact. And with this land bridge that we would be doing across, you can see it's not directly crossing any of the potential throats of those singles. So we would just make sure that we put a great tile there to make that, to make sure that continuity goes over.
So this would be one large access for plan, once the park is all complemented?
Yes, sir. Unless you want to separate that on. Unless you want to separate home visitors. Now, if you have multiple locations.
You know, that's possible. If you lay the park at the teacher's park, you then have a access.
And then they can have a direct access, this way right to those visitor's fans.
Those are the common things, if you have one large area. So how many feet is it from the parking lot to the vision gate?
So you, this is 50 yards, about 50 yards.
And is there any restrictions on if you have park, that's how far away they have to be?
Not that I'm aware of for that venue access. We've got other facilities where they have made ADA parking walk much harder. For visitors, may have a little bit of vision of ADA parking, but again, we can count it if it's on the, and may in the parking lot.
Between the road and the visitors' leechers, is there enough room for like a wall of trees or?
You can definitely do that. And right now, so your main road right there running towards house, that would be hot. And so think of this as a slope. So if it goes from that road down to those single locations, you basically take a midpoint of that slope, kind of in that, with say the top side and the bottom side, and use that to kind of kind of balance it a little. So the visitor's ground leecher's gear would be built into the grade, so they would be going down the slope. They're not kind of like pad metal leecher, they would be built into the slope. And then the field would be down lower than the high school.
And you wouldn't need any field or leechers on?
The goal is to get whatever it cut on the visitor's side, place it underneath the home leecher's side.
But it's very loose, we got the, not much, so.
That's the option. Yeah, so the goal with every site is to kind of balance. So whatever we cut on the high side, we want to basically build that on the low side, and then have it all balanced out the side.
I know with the baseball field, that we had to, we had to take it down and build it back up just to play before we brought the top layer in and the turf field on the infield and everything.
Yes, sir.
Now, does this have to, would this require that to go down and have so much of the clay under, under cover before you put the top?
It can be very costly if you've got bedrock there to kind of trench all your ready to the bedrock. But we don't have any geotechnical volunteer yet, so all of that will be dictated by a geotechnical investigation with the regulations.
So we don't know what, how quick we want to get.
How we want to get it. I know you're going to do it, I just can't tell you when to do it.
Can I ask maybe something else, I'm curious? I see our home locker room, what about visitors?
Yeah, that would be in that one thing. So that would have the locker rooms or both. Another option is if we wanted to put them in the gym, not after the night of the building, because we could all install that as an option. But the intent would be that the weight for the locker room would house all of the locker. Yeah. And they would, you would just put them on different sides, so that they're going on different angles. But then also on this plate we're showing a future field house, and also just to show you that tennis could fit if we wanted to entertain tennis on the main school campus. And we also talked about putting tennis in that soccer field, but this is just to show you, if you keep soccer field with the tennis here, it would work with the site and would not have the locking utilities in this option.
So maybe what was?
Well, you would keep a field, you would keep your soccer field, there would be some side grading with that, you know, you can see that's, there's a grate going on. But you're going to have to still make the surface, so like that circus area, no matter which building it's at, that cost is the same. It's just, do you want to take away a soccer field that has, or we could also look at putting it here, and all of that we can get at cost of things, if you want to explore that. But we just wanted to show that just for an option, that it could fit there, and then having a field house, which kind of works for all the amenities there, it could serve various sports, it's not only by football or only by baseball. So it's kind of specifically located with this.
I think we were talking about putting tennis at current soccer field, we already got leechers and concession stand in the right room, flights and to do concessions you put there, and you still have to put seating and lights here too, and concessions.
Yeah, so that would be an additional light, the lights and seating.
Another pro here is that the golf ring is not affected at all. Any other questions? Next option. So option number two, this is probably one of the more expensive options I've been exploring. This site has a pro, it is not a practice school. It is an award course in back and kind of having athletics campus field on the south side of your high school there. It is adjacent to the existing parking lot, so parking is closer. As far as utilities, you can have three case power, national gas, that's all located along industry, and also the main water line at each your high school is also located along industry as well. The negatives to this site is that it does, there's one that's not on there, it does impact the golf range. There's a 28 foot grade change from one tip of that track to the other. The way this track is oriented is in the long dimension. So if you want to replace a track, you want to place it the shortest dimension along that grade change so that you can mitigate your grades. This site protects significant retaining walls. The road leading back to industry is probably seen to be relocated in this particular direction. The other negative of this site is that there are massive amounts of stormwater that flows under that color, under that road. I would highly suggest that a geotechnical investigation would recommend removing all that soil because of how soft it is, how always been inundated with water. And then there's that 30 inch pipe that goes under the softball field that we picked up, rehyped up to the baseball field. All that water kind of discharges directly to that point. So a lot of negatives to this one. You would almost be like horseshoe shaped your tangle going from about the home grandstands up around the north side of the track and down back down, as in all the big area that you need to have a flat grade. So that's, that's one of the biggest hurdles that this site has to overcome along with the grade. So this is, this is probably my least careful.
I was going to say, look at visitors, leechers literally right outside the left of the wall.
Yes. And this site could probably scoot, be scooted further to the left. We would have to completely redo that road going to industry, but that is again another added cost to add that road destruction in there. All the other things I'm going to talk about are just partial development of this location.
Thanks. Just kidding, not kidding.
Option three, this is the kind of middle of the road option. Again, pro here, it's not in schools and the back of school. It is adjacent to the parking, and it does have access to all the same utilities that the one in the south had as well. This has a bigger grade change to deal with, there's about 34 feet across this area. And so you're probably doing what we talked about earlier, you're cutting the high side, filling the low side. The problem is we don't have the room to grade all that out, so you're probably still looking at some good entertaining walls in this area as well. The other thing we mentioned here is that your main water line, fire and the best water service come right up through the north end zone and feed the backside of your high school. So that would need to be redone, to reconnect, and your high school shut off at some point in time. That could be mitigated and figured out where you won't experience that, but it is something to kind of consider that this site would need to fire off your high school. Another key issue with this one is normally you want to put, I could talk about just like the front, you want to put your home visitor, your home spectators with their backs to the west. In this instance, we do not want to show the home spectators with their backs locally. It's the furthest away from parking, it's the furthest away from any amenities with the high school, and that's, you have to run all your utilities from your high school down to that location. So for that reason, we could show the home grandstands on the east side of the stadium, that mean you all are getting blasted in the, in the evening sun. However, it does make a very nice meeting that, that home grandstand will be built into the grade, so you would not have any storage of the grandstands, but it will be built into the grade, sloped down, plateaued up here to the field, and then probably a retaining wall all along the west side of that field to help retain that. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
This is, yeah.
Not, not, not the right size.
What about up right here? Is that any worse?
That would, that's probably between option number two and option number three from all we looked at here. And that, that is, you're still probably getting into those soils down in that drainage soil. The nice thing about this location is that it's up higher on the hill, so you probably don't have as soft soils to deal with because it hasn't seen all that water flow over here. You're still not going to get out of the cane walls with that location other, but then again, you're also adding the cost to completely redo that road. KYCC may not, may not let you relocate that exit onto industry because of how nicely it runs up with the street across the road. So we would need to find a way to reroute that road or get rid of that exit altogether. No, that helps take exiting scoops from the high school.
That's not saying drop off.
If, in that case, we'd probably get rid of this road.
And then the other program, rerouting, rerouting that road is, if you can get it down in that area, down, out in that, maybe.
I'm just thinking that power thing is getting rid of it.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, this would have to, if you put it down, I would have to eliminate that.
The sun is still going to be.
The sun is still going to be right in place. And that's, that's the biggest problem drawback, because it's not just football that you could have here, and you have Saturdays and soccer games, middle of the afternoon, and so that's, that's something that you would have to live with the entire life of the city.
And then how are you going to, where would the new rally student drop off? I mean, where are those people going to be?
Hey, at one point they used to be around the back and after. It's a town.
And that was the.
Or not, it makes it long. It's a much shorter distance, right?
And similar to the other projects, this, this also has the same facilities that I was mentioning earlier with your concession area building, your locker room, and the field house as well. And also showing it's good. It would probably impact long arrival on the ball field. That's, that's a foul, I don't think that it would.
I was on like losing storage from office lenses. Could you make a new storage area for that? A lot of times I don't know the home leechers you have, storage.
So when you look at the leechers on the slope, you've got very little room between the hog and the structure and the end of the break, so there is, what I heard him saying, there is very little notice where it's made.
Can you store?
A lot of here, yeah, they told us they could store anything under leechers. And what type of leecher you cover? So you can do a pad metal leecher, and I call it stickle leechers, but it's on concrete to get the vertical supports about every four feet. You can stick whatever, you know, pads, goalpost pads, any training equipment, possibly potentially get a little four foot pile. That's obviously something with the quick gates and a fence up where you can secure it. But the other type of leecher, which is a, a tier metal leecher, much bigger structure, which gets completely open under it. So that gives you the maximum storage.
That's a moldy area.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes.
So it looks like on option one, it was the only one where we have the, the area that would be separate on the other side. Why, is there just not enough space to put it cluster or what was the?
Did you go back to your slides?
Yeah. Right.
So, yes, the reason for that is that we did not want to fill over top of those singles and to provide a space for it. It's got.
It's got to be.
Yes, your landing area has been completely flat for both of those beds. Between the road, between Mobley and the field, there's a down gradient, so it is draining from Mobley down to the track, and it's flat to the track, and then draining down again with those singles. So it's still a finding of a cluster.
So also. Like, right at the bottom corner of the triangle towards me, there's standing water there, a lot of, before it goes down. I guess there was a single there as well.
There is a.
So, but how would that?
One runs under that road there.
No, I don't think so.
There's already.
So.
Is there a cove or, is that cove right there?
Is there?
It's a little bit of a.
It's like on the center. Rotation on there. So how would, so you just kind of.
We took that up there to the east and provided a little slot. You can see that's kind of where our survey information cut off, so we didn't have a lot of that information in that area. Another option is, you can see the largest footprint for that discus area is the discus area. The shop with is the most smaller area. You can have an option of what, like Fayette County has, Fayette County has their shop or the discus inside the track, and they actually very long to their. So I'm trying to, I just want to avoid your, avoid me to do that. Fayette County, I understand that their land law, that's just something maybe, it's an option to consider.
So, so the stadium can't, I mean, it has to be centered correct, it is, it can't come over, do a lot of space for that?
You're probably shipping the road to the hospital.
Okay.
One of the engineers.
Because if I remember, if everybody said like the single closest around here, right?
Yeah, there's three, we top lot from right that area.
But if this, you're saying this can't come over here any closer, because we would have to move the road?
You would have to move the road, and there needs to be a road to transition the grade between that, the track and your existing road that you're contracting that.
But another option is if that entry road were to throw up and around, then the discus and top of it could scoot closer, but that's a road cost having to go up the ground, keeping that intersection.
And if it was massive playing for that, that would be, that would be, we would probably spread those entry roads further apart. I fear that if you ended up wanting to do that, it would almost look like an afterthought, like you're hitting a road around or around it, and it shouldn't be there.
So, so is that just this area, if we were to add a jam on the future, that would be taken out?
Well, it's an area, it's about getting the speed, so the difference between the discus and the jam is I think we need a concrete runway for it down. And in that instance, you've got a flat concrete type of the discus cage, and then in that, that is only press cage.
So it has to be totally similar.
I, I, you could use the same way we hear it. I, I, you could use the same landing area initially, but you would need a different runway than the approach to that landing area.
Thoughts? We talked about, uh, in that option one, parking is the best of this option one. Because you've got the, opponents could be at the future parking where softball baseball is. You've got the home where the high school is. You've got an overflow at the current soccer field and intermediate that could be across the street. And the further you bring it around the back, uh, you lose that, that short walk. And then another thing I was thinking is, you know, that geothermal field, I know, I've asked you all before about like put tennis courts because it's completely flat. But what about a discus and shop foot on top of that geothermal? I mean, that's about the distance of, like, when you go to Kentucky, it's not right there. You've got to walk a little bit to the discus.
The, the discus, the landing area is just a flat rest. So that, that is actually an ideal location for discus. Shop foot, you do have that, that class size sand that you're going to put in there, which is your grain material that, that accepts that shop foot. And then there's an underground, so there is a little bit enough to it. That is something that you could put over geothermal, but again, if you ever have an issue with geothermal, you're going through it to get to it. But it is, it is a possibility you could do.
Because it's already completely flat. It's a huge area to look at.
It's not terribly admirable to have your shop foot, discus separated.
It's, it's not, it, it makes meat management a little bit more difficult because you have officiating people there. And if you've got multi-sport happening, you've got to, you know, run, run a sprint, having to go all the way behind the school and perhaps pinch the back of course. So it's probably more of a meat management issue.
There's not a whole, usually throwers are throwers, runners are runners, and there's not a whole, it's not often. They're not usually, because I think.
Sure. Uh, the other option is, uh, if you want to put some of that closer to golf range. Uh, do you like golf range as a, as a landing area is another option. Uh, that's not in the room. We started looking at possibilities to place all of the camps. But the most, I think the closest you would be, the closest any community would be, you better.
I think it is, it's golf range. I think it is golf range.
Well, shopping would not go around. I'm only talking about the discus because again, that just means a flat grass area.
I was just curious, seeing that that was the only thing that kind of had it separated out.
Even front of the school, that even had to be really pretty and lots of landscaping.
And I would get.
I did more, I get naturally, I get into it.
As well, because that's not the sort of thing that keeps you put on the back burner in coming years. It's going to have to stay, it's staying.
You know, another thing to consider is that we have to deal with any, like, issue more, more often than not, maybe closing fencing because you want to protect your investment at that point. You've got a high dollar dirt field there, you've got a high dollar track there, and you're going to keep any opposing teams wanting to face that. Uh, so at that point, you've got options for like auto chain link or upping the looks. It would be in front of your school. You can have the option of more fencing, of maybe making more, you have more elements of brick columns. Just to try to kind of respond from the length of the high school and kind of bring that more towards the road.
I'm trying to picture it in my mind. Is it, is it, like, does it sit down sun? I mean, you still see the household.
It's the leechers. It's the leechers you've got to go over.
Yeah, and the leechers, we can look at different orientations depending on if we salvage existing leechers or if we do all new. We can go long and skinny or we can go, you know, shorter and deeper. Uh, you know, shorter and deeper, you're going to block the school a little bit, but long and skinny, it, you know, it'll be longer.
It'll be nice to put out into the field, not simply.
Yeah, so again, the, the leecher, now the, the locker room and field house, you know, that could be a tall space too. But that can also be dressed up as a nice building.
Is that cost the difference in that cost? So say we had to go with a new brick leechers because we wanted to make it long and skinny.
Yeah.
Is that anywhere comparable to what it would cost to use option two or option three with all the site?
The site walk is just, I mean, it's, it's.
It, it's pretty significant.
It's a, it's a massive cost.
So even if we went together, the new leechers.
And the high school seniors are not over there. And different.
Okay, so not really options, there's an.
That's what I was just saying.
That's what I was.
Just kind of say high school and I say slow. And you're not, that's what Jason talked about, you're not stating how long the stadium from.
Right, right, right.
And that's something we go with your site lines, site studies and show you the way that it would look like from the road.
Yeah, I'd really be interested in that.
When you're driving down the road, you see the school from like, if you're driving north, you're seeing the school from that first entrance. And then you don't look, like, you see trees and like, have like a hill there. You don't really look at it so there. And once you're past it, well, coming this way, you're going to see it this way. You might say, so you never look straight on.
That's true.
The grandstands are only showing there from about thirty yard line to the thirty yard line. So that's the only spot that's going to extend vertically and really a structure.
Well, there's your own compressed plaza.
The surface.
So it's got, how do you state it in front of it like that? And there's not a road in front of it?
Field itself is going to be lower than Mowgli.
Yes, sir.
By. Yeah, I was, I was thinking. Yeah, over ten feet, something like that. Okay, then that's where your leechers are going to start on the.
Discus side.
Right, and, and they're not going to be as tall as the, as the home, home are. But the home is still going to be started on that level. But, but it's going to be further away from it. And, um, like, right now, if you, if you go through there right now, um, there's very few people that will walk at the front of the school. At the front of the school. Will be before you get to the school or after you pass the school, coming back other direction. The college left down there now, it's kind of blocked.
And your home, your home reasons, you probably want to start with those elevated anyway because you want your spectators to be able to see what you're track. So again, that's adding height, but again, you're not looking at a very wide view, but a very tall place. You're not kind of always standing on your.
Ten to take them away from the school.
And there are considerations for you, for you all. Any, any other thoughts or questions on the individuals?
I mean, I think like this is our thing instead of sun.
Well, but.
Well, I just be a, I really don't.
I just have one question that I asked Mr. Brewer about. I'm, I'm concerned with track storage of all these just because I know how much the track equipment costs. And that's what I talked to Mr. Brewer about. You know, I, I don't know, you know, under these leechers, if you use, you know, what we already have, obviously, I don't think you can have a lot of storage underneath. But the pole ball pit, the, you know, the high jump pit, all of those pits are really expensive. And if we're going to upgrade to this kind of facility, I just, I don't know, where is all the track stuff going to be stored? The hurdles, the hurdles, I mean, because that's a massive amount of equipment.
So, and again, can you almost have a leecher you go with? Can you do stores under the leechers? We typically fence off under the leechers so it is secure for you. Uh, the other option is when we start to look at programmatic elements of the buildings, you could have storage built into the building space. Uh, that you could move those ash from in your, in your, uh, facilities at that point. So we could always look at storage for you and, and design something that will work in with your needs.
The handicap parking, is, is there additional parking? I can't tell if it was to go in the front where, because obviously our handicap sponsor in the front of the school.
So you have to head up that line of field also.
So there would be additional handicap parking about the field?
We weren't showing that. Uh, that's something I know that you would want to do on a permanent basis because you don't need that, those spots blocked out the entire, the entire school year. Uh, so you have options for temporary signage, portable signage. Uh, you, you've got a lot of flexibility in that.
I think you use some kind of temporary signage.
But you have to. Yes, sir. Now something, in this configuration, I'll probably recommend figuring out how many.
We're, we're alive. I may have to park up there in a blue car. That's where you come off the road. Like, just play the spot right up.
Great points and things that we need to remember in the design phase, that's where it is handicap. I know we always have the softball, baseball, future parking spot. If you line up against a road, we'll have an entrance there that goes left or right. Because there will be that sidewalk outside the fence you're talking about to keep everybody, keep everybody off of that expensive track.
Signs of, just say handicap parking stadium events, just signs there. People move, can you give a time?
You know, another option for spectators or visitor spectators, you can park them over at the end of the school and save the, save the outfield of softball at the halfway block. You can always put visitors across to make them more cross-street. So you, you've got a lot of possibility with this option.
Well, you can also do it at the southeast end zone probably for our turnip farm.
So what's our next steps here?
Right.
Could you go back to the second slide, please? So, um, we're still just looking at the programming. Um, but if, if you all are big with option one, we can continue to explore that and we'll move into schematic design, while this is. Um, our goal is that at the September, where we knew to come back and have a HTE one and schematic design drawings for your group. So we'll be, we'll steam ahead to get all of that program spaces agreed with the building plans and, um, and start to get that generated. Um, with this scale of the project, more than likely KDE will allow it to be a tier that's there. So with the elventry, we had a tier one, so we had to do each of these spaces that you see. Um, with this being athletics, we can usually combine the D and C base. So we'll probably do one test D approval and then a combined D C approval. But we're looking at about six months to go from our, today to bidding, which is the orange there. Um, so kind of six months of design, a couple of steps here and there to, you know, check it and get a group. Then they go into bidding and then the spring. So that's, that's the current.
Good. So, so what do you need in that?
Well, we just need direction, since there's three options on the table or, you know, any other options that you want us to look at. Um, and we would just like to know which one we want to go with and then we will continue working on that and, and just continuing to progress the design.
Cards on this logistics. There is an option, an option.
Option one is, it, what, what are your thoughts right now? Option one is the, uh, thought of the least expensive force.
It's the most economical of all options.
It's not all. Not all of them.
You guys say something, you have lots in the high school site.
Well, they'll be in the same offering, it's the same.
When, when we actually started thinking about this, my thoughts at the time was to put it in front of school. Well, when we got the sinkholes, then I thought we might have to change directions there. But now probably I can think of it as well.
You can make it work small. Since we do have no entities there, if you do select the site, you can probably do a higher level of idea, that full investigation, do some physical investigation, try and map some of those sinkholes. Find out as much about it as you can. Uh, but again, you all know better than to boast, that when you start over the ground, you're going to tell them which would really get a lot. Yeah, thank you.
Just one quick question. Once, if construction was to begin on the front of the school, what would construction do to the daily operations of those two entrance roads? Because that's our two main arteries into the high school.
Well, we would probably do is put a construction entrance off of that through the middle, above Mowgli. Uh, that would be allowing you all the most flexibility and it would not inhibit your daily operations.
Similar, I was going to say similar to the baseball, softball, I think.
Good thought. That's a question.
Uh, we do have several, action I would like to road call both. First will be our drug testing consent forms. Oh, listen.
And hopefully this is, I'm asking if we just take off the, the lines and talk about that it just covers the exact activity, voice forms, the things we're doing now. I suppose who's taking it over that role of this. I'm not sure. I would be able to figure out when his season's been, because like they have weightlifting, inserting parts up here, they're, they're doing, they're doing. All, it's, it's online on your lawn. So in order for us to be super transparent, parents, the thing of, you know, the toddler just kind of in the store. They're signing up for that, for the duration of the ones they sign before, and it's like school year, then the community and the career. So I don't plan, I don't know when you're working out indoors or stuff, or it's just, it's just.
That's better, right?
It is, yeah, it's better. I like that better.
Yes. Well, the policy never decided, wasn't our consent forms did, so I think it's a little confusing, but I just didn't, I just wanted it to be clear. And so I just need, it's a wondering, this is just the procedures, your policy itself, so.
Do we get a motion on this? Uh, can I please have a motion to accept the policy?
Can I have a motion?
Ms. Francesca makes a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Hart, second. Uh, road call, please.
District one, April Rendziewski?
Yes.
District two, Amy Mark?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we have several change orders coming up. And this day that you're presenting, all these, correct?
I'm on the agenda. Start with the personal ownership of the right one, ten point twelve or ten nine twelve. Ten nine twelve is a credit from your payer or, uh, you're elected to remove the accent walls in all the classrooms. You go with all the walls being the same color. Um, it doesn't change the labor cost because it wasn't ours, but the white, pink, blue were. But there is created a late payment, eighty dollars in savings without having to go to the secondary loan. Questions? I have any questions?
I'll make a motion to. We can get great. Okay, Mr. Brewer puts a motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, second. Road call, please.
District one, April Rendziewski? Yes. District two, Amy Mark?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy.
Yes.
Change order number eleven.
All right, change order number eleven. We've already talked about a couple of months ago, this was the one where the roof installation had to be changed to get the slope on the roof. I can make a break here. And, uh, we worked together for an optimal seat price and at the end of the day, uh, the total price actually came in, uh, quite a bit less than the optimal seat. At, uh, twenty thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll make a motion to. Motion on the floor with Mr. Brewer, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, second. Road call.
District one, April Rendziewski?
Yes.
District two, Amy Mark?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy.
Yes.
Change order number twelve.
Change order number twelve. This is for some security camera locations. It's actually part one, one, two, because there's a secondary change order to the supplier. But it changes, it changes something after due with, uh, with Mr. Brewer and, uh, Runcie. And, uh, and Will, that there was some locations that want to change the, uh, security cameras around, some where you're running the wire. There was some where you're running the wire to fully themselves, uh, blocks that clear the walls and go. So first change order is to plant electric, uh, for two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. And then the second one, we'll do it one at a time. The second part of that is the, uh, change order to the direct purchase order to, uh, Nutec to, for three thousand one hundred and seven dollars and seven cents.
You go with this one?
Yeah. One thing we noticed is that we didn't have a cam along the serving lines in the cafeteria, which is an old administrator at high school, we always, always have a look back at those cameras. So we placed one in there, we also put a couple more exterior cameras around the elementary school, so we can see what's going on, not only during the school, but outside of school hours as well. So you have these things that we recommend.
Can I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion.
Mrs. Francesca, there's a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Hart's second, road call.
District one, April Furtensky?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Change order three dash seven.
Yeah, that's the second part of that one, that's for the actual additional cameras and stuff that Mr. Brewer was talking about.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Hart, there's a motion on the floor, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery's second, road call, please.
District one, April Furtensky?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Change order thirteen.
All right, this one gets long because it involves multiple different contractors. And the purpose of this is the transformer has to be moved away from the building X amount of feet or KUs requirement designation. It's a little bit confusing, I'm gonna speak a little bit for RTA and I'll get a crossways, I want them to jump up and wave their hands to come down. But standard practice from all design teams is the building, the transformer has to be X amount of feet away from the building. Well, in this, we use term district, KU, KU is requiring this one to be X amount of feet from the closest door. I have that reversed. It's supposed to be X amount of feet, typically it's X amount of feet from the closest door to the transformer. So if you've got a transformer here, a building here, which door's down here, you meet that distance. In this district, this KU.
Got it.
Yeah.
One person has a different idea, right?
Well, I'll lean back to the design team because they've covered it the most, but yes, their interpretation is the transformer has to be X amount of feet from the building, not that door, which is telling you the design of the transformer has to be moved about four to five feet.
What does the standard say?
There is a standard. There is a standard.
So there's like another.
It's interpreted by the individual office.
So have you all have seen this before?
No. So it's actually the pad. So normally it's to the transformer, in this case they want it to be the concrete pad. So the transformer is sitting in the middle of a nine-by-nine pad, you have to move the whole pad out further from the building to maintain the distance that they're requiring.
That pad size and the transformer size are all being taken by KU.
So there's nothing in writing that says how far or what those specifications are? They're just making them up?
They, we had to get their approval for it to do that. So it's, to move on, it has to move per KU.
And David Dry, typical standard practice is from the cabinet of the transformer to the door to the building wall has to be X amount of feet. They want it from the edge of the concrete pad, not the transformer cabinet.
Can we request a second opinion?
We tried.
About four times.
So are the future things coming up that we might have to change? Have we got the guy out there to inspect everything?
So this is, this is the part that they're looking at and this is what they're requiring me to do. But it hasn't been built yet, so it's, you know, it's just moving it prior to building it.
So it's just more material.
There's things in the face of that, to be quite honest, there's one small credit in here because of that, sorry, but it doesn't offset the overall cost. I'll go piece by piece. The asphalt company, because it's going to have to move the stones in the asphalt in that dark area, to it to be, that cost was $827.53. So let me, let me just summarize what they're doing. To remediate all this, they're just moving the parking lot where the cookmaker's park in the back, they're just moving it all back three or four feet, whatever KU says we have to move it back. So that you're picking up asphalt, concrete, sidewalk, and a credit for the little, what do you call those? Mallets. Mallets, and then, and then of course it's increasing the power rather than the ability. It's decreasing the conduits from the main transformer, but that those conduits are in, so it just hasn't, the electric was just had to cut off. Those were installed, are down to, they just lay out.
Just taking further away from.
Saying further away from the building about four feet. So we're going to build one at a time.
So that's the first one, so we can, so we got thirteen, one, two.
Thirteen, one, thirteen, four, and thirteen.
Next, fourth, second.
This one's $827.53.
I'm sorry, what?
This one is $852.27.53.
Yes, this is the asphalt contractor, the initial asphalt, just wanted to be used to expand that part of the area.
This is this part of this change order, can I have a move?
Because you have individual contractors with each one of these contractors, we have to do the same order for each one.
Yeah, this just covers the part and the.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve for lactate portion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Can I have a second? Mrs. Francesca's second, road call, please.
District one, April Furtensky?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Change order two.
All right, thirteen, action room two, this change is with concrete in this area, again, changes pad, changes area. I agree, the dirt raised concrete, protest concrete, this is an add of $2,996.67.
Okay, so is this the same contractor that's doing, moving the dirt, fill the dirt?
Yes.
So we're saving them thousands of dollars by dropping it off next door, the least they can do to buy.
Do you know that?
Tens of thousands of dollars with haul bills, and they're going to charge us another $3,000?
You don't have to approve.
Okay, that's my opinion.
I like it. That's why I presented to you, it's, is.
That is petty.
You're saying don't treat the message. You're saying don't treat the message, is what you're saying.
I have a job to do and I'm doing it.
So explain that again. Yeah, everyone's.
So, so they weren't, Robinson is the contractor, this is all exactly, it's correctly aware of our, and so, and so instead of having their haul bills, taking all that dirt to Lawrence Square, I think they're somewhere, or pretty far away, Wilson's took all that dirt, that's why they huge mountain of dirt. And so essentially they had zero haul bills, other than taking it over the little, and saving them, I don't know how many, hauls of dirt. In time.
As a mound, we just need them to bring us one little load or something and.
Comfort off.
That's right.
I'm prepared for it.
Yeah.
As a, as a good fact, I think they should do it. Just because our, their community, our community neighbor saved them tens of thousands of dollars.
That's why.
First, set up a meeting, what important? If you want to stretch your position there, I'd be glad to.
So if we don't break this tonight, and we do want to set a meeting, if you come back next month, if need be.
Anything going to delay the project, that's my biggest concern.
If you have a big transformer moved, and they're all simply paying that transformer.
So it's not a control.
You got a big transformer moved. Still lose the pad sizes, the size will get to the pad, that's what this is.
And this, so talk to me about making this transformer, this is halting, this is halting things?
It's preventing you from getting permanent power. You have a transformer, you can't get permanent power in the building.
So if this was the way you're about to, you're making it happen?
This was delayed around, or so, it's going to delay getting permanent power in the building. Getting permanent power in the building is going to affect us to be able to temper conditions really, which is going to impact the energy system. So everything kind of down, it was all that's been asked.
So if we approve it tonight, how quickly would be anticipated anyway?
They'll put it aside within the stairs, where the damage won't change towards that. I have the stairs to speak, but if you didn't, in the same process, we got nothing with the people.
Would it be good with the next one?
Possible, so, yes, they're ready, they're ready to set a transformer for the power. That's the reason we found this out, is they came out to do science inspection and lay out all the pairs, so they're saying that they're good, so yes, that pair would go down and then the transformer would be drawn in. Transformer's in KU's hands, so when you get that in there, it's, you know, out of any contractor's control, electrician's control, you would monitor what else is, but it's supposed to have this transformers in the yard for your students.
I don't know if it's a way, but.
There's a principle.
There is a principle.
I understand, I understand.
A point shouldn't be made.
I see, I see Donnie Day, your name on there, I'll make sure to email him.
You don't know him?
I don't know him, but I'm going to.
Okay. I thought you had Donnie, he's a good friend.
Nope.
He has a good friend.
I'll express.
I mean.
The way things move, I don't know, I'm just used to it. They had the opportunity to have you.
Can I put this into perspective for you all? I work for you all, okay? Again, I'm not up there advocating for any of these guys. These are, these are my job to be your representative and trying to make this project feel as fast as we can with the amount of days that we've had, the challenge of weather. But I want to share with you just a small piece of information, so you all understand exactly where this project's at in the grand scheme of things. You've had two big change orders on this project. One of them being that sinkhole that we've all talked about and dealt with. And the other one was the razzle that's going to add, that should have added to the, to the hallways. If you don't count those, because those two are truly up, ones are on, and the sinkhole was, I think we've been all great, was an unknown.
Right.
Before tonight, you've had $25,560 in change orders on this project. That is per percentage of the project planning, that is 0.0008%. U.N. national average is on the project, determined by the American Institute of Earth Artifacts, 8.9%. And we're 60.000 to 0.0008. I'm going to share about my zeros.
We understand that.
That's, I mean, that's.
I can see, but every penny.
I understand, I understand.
And the, just the idea of, I need a change order for the savings of the hauls.
Yeah. Yeah.
As you're advised.
I know how it's worked, but I'm going to say that.
But again.
And I'm not, I'm not aggressing this in you guys.
We're not, look.
I know you're just.
I think you know what I'm saying, I'm okay to approve it, but I, but I just think it's important that we are able to say that we see that that's not really.
And maybe for sure, that's true, I mean, that does not put it on the spectrum.
I just want to know what your team has been able to thus harden the project. We've got some more to talk about, but that's all we're asking for.
That's why we hired you for football.
I like that.
We know you do what you do.
I appreciate that, but we're still, we're still at the position we're at, we even going to move forward or we're not. So it's, again, it's your, it's your, it's your, I work for you, I give you my, my opinion as you ask it, and that's all we're.
Can I make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I want to ask you to do one thing.
What's that?
I want, I want, I want you to make sure that Isaac Sun knows that actually, maybe we haven't saved them money, but us knowing, knowledge of the percentage and who's around it, that we have saved them a footload of money for hauling new. And I'll make the motion to approve this, but all this, that stuff's seen, I've talked a lot of myself.
You figure out what the percentage is of the change order on their profit after what they made and just bring that up to them and see if they feel gracious enough to make that.
It's shown back?
No, she's saying they've saved so much.
I wish I waited there.
That's what I'm saying. Oh, I bet they know it.
Well, I hope they do.
That's just all we're saying, you know, it's kind of, we're just saying it's not really great business, no. We'll, we'll prove it, that it's not good business.
Are you saying that?
Sure.
I'll just, I'll just, before we vote, I will absolutely share your sentiment and your thoughts, and yours as well. Who knows, this might come back around and do us a favor a little bit later.
Yeah, I, I think that the favor is going to have to wait, come on, say, hey, let me work, let me work for you in this matter. I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Mrs. Montgomery, and second, Mrs. Francesca, road call, please.
District one, April Furtensky?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Change order thirteen.
Which one are we on?
Four.
The fourth. This one to get money back, any questions?
I make a motion.
Okay.
Easiest one so far.
Okay, because we're big credit, we have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Francesca, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery's second, road call.
District one, April Furtensky?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Thirteen, seven.
All right, this is the last one that's involving a transformer. This one's from the electrical contractor, as I said, they want to be part of our way through, what that's done is caused the, caused the wiring and everything to be part of the way, plus they've also required an additional four-inch primary conduit, and then they did delete some concrete decays, so backup, all the backup is behind it with that additional cost, is $3,054.07.
It's going to cost, it's going to take them 17 hours to do a copy, one month.
It's going to take them that long with the regular conduit, so it's already in there. They can't use the ones that they got.
That's a man hour or two.
Yeah. That's typically, that's about two man one day.
And the secondary part, much more expensive than the primary.
You have to use all new conduits, they can't work.
It's going to be longer.
So they gotta add, so they gotta add, they gotta add, and hire a new conduit, it's not in there. Because they.
They don't have to take out what they've already.
They don't take out what they, oh, sorry, if I said.
No, it's just.
But they, they can't use the wire that they've already got, because they gotta recut water, all of this, we forget that, when they order their wire, they replace obstacle design and they have to cut for that list. I think it's the school wire up there, and all this being cut at the supply.
Okay.
And then, and this type of wire, this type of wire is what needs from the transformer to you.
Do you have a question? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pruitt, with a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Hart's second, road call, please.
District one, April Furtensky?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Change order fourteen.
All right, this one's for the electrical contractor. It is to provide electricity and fire protection alarm connection to the art protection vault, the primary vault that sets up as all the, it's where all the water comes in and separates into two lines. One, actually, I was going to say.
No, no, I'm thinking.
It's, it's, this vault is provided by the art protection contractor, your water comes into it and there it splits into two, your art protection is one lane line going in the building, your plumbing is another way line. These vaults, if they don't have, if they don't have something, then the water, the water, the water is designed to be there to put high voltage.
So this wasn't in the original design? Why?
I'll second, I was going to say somewhere else.
Where?
The NTA decision, so.
So, okay. So would, how would that, why would that be our responsibility to cover?
Value added. Then, if, if it had been there, that value would have been in the cost at the bay, so it just would have been higher.
So was there, so is there anything else in that trench that they're putting over its own, to, where did you say the vault is?
The vault is out in front of the building, toward where, off of, off of the right.
Off of the right. And so, so they had to put a separate trench in because they can't put it with the water on the ground.
Right.
Was there already a trench out to, a trench out to the sign?
There is, there is a trench up to the sign, which is not conduit, no more wiring design from inside the building to paddle or anywhere.
Okay, so why can't they use a trench?
They use trenches, can't use conduit.
So all get charged back to a trench, thirty foot.
They're sparring off of the trench to the sign, and so they're wanting the water, and then they're sparring off of that same trench around the building, doesn't mechanical or what the panels are.
That's not the entire trench all the way out there that's coming off of it, it's a trench that went to the sign, this vault is located over here, and then it's.
So you have to go around the building? Why couldn't, why couldn't you go straight to it? Wouldn't, wouldn't that be in the design? Go through the concrete and have it, stick it up?
But it wasn't.
It wasn't in the design.
So who screwed that up?
She didn't do any.
So they should pay for that extra wire around the building instead of straight to it, because it should have already been there, there's an extra, right? Am I right though? Instead of going straight, you could go in like this, get a bunch more wire, it's going to cost a whole lot more than straight.
That's a different man, that is not designed, so who knows how they would design. That, that is.
They would have made a straight line, which was going to. So essentially, what, what we're saying is it was left out of the design. And it should have been in the original design. So it was causing them to have more material to go right on the building instead of straight to it. So I guess basically, she's telling the same, C and T was left off, should have been on there, that charge should have originally been there. Either way, we're paying, but Cliff makes a good point, you know, building design was a shorter route to go, it may well be on that point, I don't know. Question?
That's, that's a question for the electrical engineer.
But it should have been part of the original cost, it would have been a clue. So were you paying this, were you adding to it now, it would have been part of the original?
That's the definition of value add.
It's just more material added.
I mean, you've got, you know. I just, you know, here's my thing, we expect. I agree, no, I agree, but here we are, you know, so.
Wouldn't that automatically be assumed that it is there and you would price that into the, I mean, that you have to have electric to something?
You only, contractors only get it, it's on the ground, that's how they can say competitive, who did it?
So who found, who found the error?
Who?
Contractor.
Is he going to make a motion?
Well, I've made, I've made this comment time or two, well, maybe I'll take it in time, but some were, some were down the road here for mistakes in, in the drawings, mistakes in the designs that were forgotten or left out or somewhere. Somebody that didn't include that would have to step up and say, that was my fault, I will beg for it. So wherever that ball lands, then you, you're going to have to make another little talk with somebody wherever you're with it to say, hey, this has got to stop.
Oh, I knew that name. I knew that name.
Yeah, I know it.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
So the thing is, guys.
That's why I'm, I'm so fine saying this right now.
We know that things come up. We know that there's going to be a sinkhole, and you did know there was going to be a sinkhole, there's going to be, but, and, and those, that's the reason you have a little nest egg cushion, you know, these are the things you anticipate, but you don't anticipate an electric not being in the design.
No, but what I will say, and, and in all, in all honesty, straightforward as, as your prescription, that's why, that's why you hired me for the part, for the next one, you might hire me for a bit there, but to be actually honest with you, and that's what all, promised from a painter, and it's what it always been, everybody that's, that's his, his, just like you guys, everybody makes a mistake. Now, KDE requires you as an entity to carry the whole of contingencies, that's what your contingency is, is for, is for unknowns and errors. So, I mean, typically, that is, that I, you don't have to agree with me, but that is the reasoning for it.
I agree to a certain extent, but they have to, at some point, we need to have to accept the error, but they should accept some type of responsibility as well.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm explaining.
And don't they have a contingency on their side to say, ooh, I made a big mistake, I need to cover that cost?
She's not one of them, I'm not.
I would think, it would work both ways, because we have to err on the side of caution, so I would think that they would have to as well.
Again, that is, that is your, your design team and their consultant. I will leave that question there. I'm the guy standing podium.
You're, you're just staring.
I don't mind, I don't mind you, and I'll take you straight, I'll take you straight forward every time, and this is just where it is.
She kind of touched on the same thing that I was going to say. We have contingencies that built in, we buy, take along, we have to have that.
Correct.
We have to have a certain percentage of those.
Don't worry.
I've been, I've been, I've been in the design works in many projects through my work too, and I know as well as anybody else knows that anytime that I did design on something, I always had a little sway there some part of time wise or whatever to cover my butt in case I made a mistake, and I absolutely ensure that the other bidders, designers, everybody involved with it has that built into their projects too. If they don't, they're out of the minds. But I'll make a motion to approve it.
Well, hold on, before, before, before the motion, before I second the motion, or whatever, I, I just want to say this, it's really, to me, I'm just a person that has a certain expectation of integrity, and it's really about, it's not even so much about the amount of money as it is just taking ownership of your mistakes. So that's really where I'm having a hard time, is if somebody said, yes, it's value added, you have to have it, it would have been in the design, we made a mistake, you know, if this was, if that's what was transpiring and it wasn't just, oh, here, pay this, then that would feel a little different. So that's, I'm just going to go on the record.
The, the way I treat these change orders, I treat it like it's my money, so.
That's how I treat it. You want to see that, you want to see the GNC dollars?
I, I can get it. Yeah, and, and so, you know, I don't care, I don't know if you care, but my dad was a, a good contractor. He'd sit at the kitchen table and take off drawings, you know, all the time. If he messed up and, you know, didn't order enough ceiling tile, or didn't, you know, set everything up, he paid for it.
Yeah, that's common.
He never put in a change order, I know that, so it was, it was on him. If, if the customer wanted something different, then they paid for it.
But in this case, whether you've asked for it or not, you've asked for something different. You've asked for this power to go to that, go to that fire loss.
But we didn't. We asked for it from the beginning to do it the right way, and they did it the wrong way, therefore, they should take a fourth.
Yeah, the mistake is on their end, here it is. I mean, we can get back, we can get it in the back and forth about whether we wanted to drag the project out because of it, but I, I'm just telling you that the mistake was on their end and it does put a certain place in my mouth, that it is being presented as something that would be our responsibility.
Okay, I'm going back. So, on this, I'll make sure that we have a motion, but just to correct, to approve. Mr. Franceski, he has a second. Do we have anything else to say for, as for the vote?
You should go back and show this video, tell what you had to go through.
I, I would believe that this is directed.
No, seriously, you, you understand that, that's.
No, I, I would think that, I'm just, I'm just.
Give you credit. It's just the sun's absorbing it. You're taking the slings and arrows right now, and, I mean, golly, I mean, bless you for doing it.
I don't, I don't feel it's that way, I'm just doing my job.
And we appreciate it.
As honestly as I can.
And we very appreciate it.
Okay, so we have motion by Mr. Montgomery, a second on Mrs. Franceski, roll call, please.
District one, Amber Franceski?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes, as I was, I hate to.
District three, Bill McGurman?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
We got one more change order.
We have one more? Listen, smaller, present a question.
Is it, is it?
This, this, this one might be a port of your alley.
What, what?
Of your alley.
All right, so we have, we have had a conflict on the site of two materials trying to occupy the same place, if that makes sense. Here's, here's the, the backstory behind it. I'll give her, I'll give her doorways around the wings and school, and then in a couple other areas, they have a pre shared building with canopies, so these canopies don't have posts out front, they're just, they're attached to the back of the building, and then they have a support rod that goes from the top of the canopy back to the building, so there's, it's just, you walk out about these doorways and they're, I know they're a canopy, you're five, six feet wide, but they don't have a post that's in a period of four inch. The canopies are a delegated design. Delegated design means that a independent canopy supplier asks the design canopy, the design team does not take the responsibility of designing the canopy because there's multiple different, like, well, you've got this time, this Tennessee Valley, but I was a deep, probably eighty-five, ninety percent of all the canopies on the schools. Their design, they had to have, there's bracket design that goes that maps to the building that has a loading bracket up front of, above each door. These safety strategies can be placed at a certain distance with an elevation off of the ground or off of the bottom of the floor to align with the placement of the canopy. Unfortunately, over these doors, you also have to take off lemons, tunnels, an L, an L handle that is actually designed to carry the brick. When the brick builds up to the edge of the door or the window, the windows pile up as well, then that brick has to sit on something coming across that door, that's where the lintel comes in. The lintel and the bracket are both designed and hidden in the same place. Both pieces are being occupied the same, the same place. So what has to happen is the lintel has to be modified, in the field, by the, by the steel director, and they have to be launched, they're galvanized, so it has to be cold, cold galvanized in the field, there's a special type of painting, you put that on there, and tack all of these lintels to these brackets so that you can have a brick course over the top of the door. Again, I will, I will stand here and tell you as, as your representative between the design team and anyone else, no one but the architect is going to get to this place. This is one of those things, if slot A goes to slot B, and slot C is supposed to go to slot D, but actually slot A going in slot B, and then slot C going in slot B as well. Also, this, the new piece is done in the field and is three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
So we didn't guide this out of the canopy because we said it was so, so.
We knew, we knew the size of the canopy, but we did not know exactly where the brackets were going, because they're part of the delegated design, the, the mounting points of.
So there's seven of them, I guess?
There's six of them.
Six, what, what's on, how?
Twelve, twelve sides, that's how it happened, all sides.
How many is there total? Is there just six of them?
Yep.
Like, for the whole building?
That's the only ones we found, that's the only ones we've found conflict with, we checked them off.
So how, how was that conflict, was some done?
Because some of them are over storefronts and some of them are over brick doors.
So all of the, what, storefronts?
The storefronts are fine, but.
All the brick doors are.
It's not all the brick doors, it's just, it's just six of them.
How does it sound like the brick doors aren't messed up?
They're on A and there is C and.
Is it because those levels are different on those doors, those six doors? Or what is the difference?
Did you notice it before, when you got to number seven?
We haven't put a video yet, we noticed it, we thought the water, and then we go in and check it, found six.
If I'm wrong, the reason why there's six is because all of those post brackets, which are four on each door, which is four times six is twenty-four, post come off, those were mounted and they're already on the school.
Yeah.
And then the bricklayers came and said, uh-oh, I can't put my lintel up there to put my brick, and, but if, if it was caught before the post were mounted on the elementary school, it would have been, it would have been easily moved down or knocked up, maybe breaks the ceiling, but.
Again, the delegated design, now come back and check this person dictates where those mounted, like a six foot, has to mount three foot to the center of that bracket and the center of that canopy. So we just.
And if this was caught before they were mounted on the school, it would have still been a cost.
Yes, according to the, according to the design of the canopy, they have to go with that elevation and that vertical.
But if the post weren't put, if the post weren't up yet, then the design could have been changed to a.
We were saying, we were talking about the posts, we're talking about different things. The posts is actually the bracket, it's a, it's a four, it's a piece of four or two that steps out about six inches onto the building and has a plate with the canopy mounted.
So aren't you going to have to cut the other eighteen layers in time? Why?
The elevation of the doors and stuff, the elevation.
Because you're changing.
The elevation of bracket makes it clear.
You're changing the design.
Oh, we're not changing the design, the elevation of the bracket clears. This is all happening, where it mounts on the other doors is where you have all the flatter slope. D and E, as the table said, where this is happening is on area A, where you have a slope group, and in the back a little bit on area C.
So then they make sure that the doors are on the same.
Which means the doors are all the same. The pictures of the doors are all the same. The elevation of the canopy is different on the, on the plaque, or that gets on the gate on the slope, the gate area.
So you had to order C for, for section A, you had to order canopies one way in section D or whatever?
Yeah, there are different sizes, you've got three foot canopies, five foot canopies, six foot canopies, all the canopies are the same way, there's multiple canopies throughout the. I probably should play with that, too.
No, I just, I'm trying to pick out, I'm like, wait, where's all the same size?
As much as what you're looking at, sometimes you're not getting some of the same thing you did, but you have, you have different, you have different with canopies throughout, depending on the door, whether it's a single door, or a double door canopy, it's different.
If not, can I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mrs. R makes a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Montgomery, second, roll call, please.
District one, Amy Franceski?
Yes.
District two, Amy Moore?
Yes.
District three, Billy McGarry?
Yes.
District four, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
When you leave, you want to leave, though, again, those numbers, I said, I don't know what they are. In reality, you know, the problem is still a whole way. I know this was a long session tonight, part of the longest one you've had since, since we've been here, but it was a good exercise.
A good exercise? No, I'm kidding.
It's not like it's, it's not like I pretended off the door.
Yeah, you probably did.
I ain't trying to watch my.
No, I, it's, it's not anything, yeah, this is great, I, I consume most of this during this time, so I've kind of warmed up for you.
It is only a good, only a good thing here if, whenever we have another one of these, it's some of these people along the way that has made mistakes or whatever, you know, say, this is a change of cost or something, and we're going on, we're going to take care of it.
Well, you wouldn't like, you wouldn't like, we wouldn't like them.
Yes, I think so.
Absolutely. I like how that just didn't come, huh?
I'd take it for an electric to an electrical client, please bring them back in person.
Well, we were exacting today.
Thank you, lady. Appreciate it. Next, our audio enhancement proposal for the school elementary school.
Has your, has your battery run out?
No, we're good. We are good. I'm going to turn that down a little bit so you don't hear me too loud. First of all, thank you all so much for having me tonight. You'll see on the screens, I've got a short presentation that I'm going to run through with you all, just so you're more well versed in what audio enhancement is and everything that we do. So without further ado, I'm going to start by telling you all a little bit about myself. My name's Watson Ritchie, I'm the Regional Sales Director at Audio Enhancement for the state of Kentucky. I am a girl dad, I have an eight-year-old daughter and a two-year-old daughter, and they keep me on my toes at all times. I'm also dog obsessed, you'll see my two dogs pictured up there, that's Cece and Tito. Fun fact I'm going to share about Tito, I got him when he was six weeks old. On July 16th, we celebrated his 15th birthday, so he is truly a man's best friend for me. I'm a huge sports fan, go Cats, and as Mr. Montgomery comes out, I'm also a huge Cubs fan. I'm a lover of all music, originally from eastern Kentucky, a small little town called Pikeville, if you've ever heard of that. If you have heard of it, say I said Pikeville. I graduated from BKU, and I currently live in Richland, Kentucky, so just a short drive away from you all here. I'm also going to share a little bit about our story, so how Audio Enhancement was founded. More or less, this company was founded on a mother's love for her children. Claudia, as you see, pictured in the middle there, she had two boys who were both born profoundly deaf. When she took them to the doctor, the doctor said, yep, your son's deaf, nothing we can do about it. The doctor basically said, they're going to be nothing more than glorified pencil cells. As a loving and caring mother, she wasn't willing to accept that, so she sought out to find a solution. What she did was she went to Radio Shack, if you remember those from back in the day, she got a microphone that clipped to the teachers' shirts, and then she put a little FM radio cut out in a textbook for her boys to take from class to class. So they were able to hear the teachers' instruction. The aha moment occurred when Claudia went to get the microphones from the teachers to take to the next grade level, and they said, hold up, you can't take this from us, this isn't just good for your boys, this is good for every student in the classroom. So from there, that's where Audio Enhancement was founded. Just a little bit of statistics about Audio Enhancement, we are in over 4,000 districts nationwide, almost 40,000 schools, and over 1.4 million classrooms. We have impacted over 28 million students nationwide, so those are some stats that we're very proud of. Getting into the solution overview, I know you all are probably aware that we are an intercom company, but we're also an instructional company as well as a safety company, so you're getting so much more than just the intercom. Now I'm going to walk through each of these solutions with you all, one by one. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions throughout the day. So starting with the audio, what is audio enhancement? A lot of people think, well, we just want your teachers to be loud, that's actually not the case. Case is, we want the instruction to be clear so all students are hearing it. So I'm wearing my microphone right now, and if I were to use my phone, you can see how low I'm actually talking. But when I turn my microphone back on, you can hear my voice in there. So that's what this all boils down to, we want the instruction to be heard by the students because learning begins with hearing. And I always like to use this analogy, if you were designing the classroom, you wouldn't just put one light in front of the room and expect it to light up the whole entire classroom. The same is true with the audio in the classroom. If you just have one teacher, then the, the audio is not actually being evenly distributed throughout the classroom so that every student can hear instruction. This just illustrates that, when a teacher's on that side of the room, sure, those students closest are heard here, great, but as you get further away, and then you see an HVAC system next to the window, there could be a fire truck dropping by, police sirens, all those things, those students cannot hear as well. So the teacher's like, well, I'll just go in the middle of the room, and that works great for the students closest to her, but still, the students further away cannot hear as well. So then a teacher says, well, I'll just use my teacher voice, right? And that's all well, but some students may have, you know, a negative emotion or negative feeling towards the teacher voice. They may have some issues at home where when they hear what they consider yelling, it could have some negative effects on them. So how do we fix this? Pictured, you'll see four speakers in the ceilings. This is meant to evenly distribute the sound throughout the classroom, you'll see the teacher now wearing her microphone, and there's an amplifier up on the wall. So our microphones use DECT technology, if you remember cordless phones from back in the day, same technology, and that's what helps get the audio distributed throughout the classroom. We also offer a translation service, now this is something brand new that we just came out with. I'll briefly touch on this and say that the teacher wears their microphone, then there's a little box that plugs into their computer. They then go to a website and it generates a code. They share the code with the student. The student then types in that code and selects their native language. As the teacher's teaching and giving her instruction, the students logged into their Chromebook, iPad, whatever, with headphones in, they're hearing that translated in their native language. So that's going to allow them to learn some of these tougher subjects like math or science, things like that, and it also provides a transcript. Now, this is not stored because we don't want you all to have to mess with your policies and procedures in any ways, so at the end of that classroom instruction, either the teacher or the student is going to want to copy and paste that into a Word document if they want to review that later. Here's the cool part about the transcript, it can be in their native language, or it can be in English. So if they selected English, they'd be hearing this instruction in their native language, but reading it in English right in front of their face, so that's going to help them learn the English language in the process. And then we're also big on student engagement, I actually brought one of my student microphones with me today, it's in that box, but we like to encourage students to participate in class, and, you know, this is one of those things where if you have shy students or very soft-spoken students, this is going to give them the opportunity to have their voice be heard and also learn those real-life skills of speaking in front of people or using a microphone, so that's another big piece of the, the classroom audio. These are just some audio research findings, not going to spend a lot of time on this, there's only a few I want to point out. Number one, the research shows this does maximize student performance. Number two, this is a big one, improved classroom behavior. Studies have shown when teachers wear their microphones and their voice is amplified, students actually behave better, and I know you all, I heard something about Ron Clark Academy earlier tonight, he utilizes our system in his schools, and he is big on getting the classroom behavior, he attributes some of that to the teacher with a microphone. And then your teachers will love this one, 43% reduction of teacher drug discomfort. If you all have ever been educators, you know that after you teach all day long, your, your voice is pretty much shot, so this is going to help with it. Any questions on the audio before I move on to the Epic system, which is our intercom system? Good day. So what, so what kind of, you said headphones? How's an headphone work? Yeah, it's a good question. So essentially, that's going to be headphones provided by the school or the student bringing their own headphone in, they, they just need to plug into, if they use a laptop, a Chromebook, whatever it is, plug that in, and then those headphones are going to, how, how they hear your translation. Yes, absolutely.
So it's like looking to the computer? So they have?
Yes.
They have a module set with their computer that pictures up and pictures into the computer?
Actually, the module you're, you're mentioning is connected to the teacher's computer.
Oh.
Yes, yes, so not every student needs this, just the teacher in the classroom.
So, so they, they log on with, they, they log on with their computer to code that she gives them?
That's correct. So it's an IT-based program, and they go to the website, it's adclearconnect.live/teacher, the teacher then is given a, she has to name the session, so it could be first period, second period, what have you, and then she clicks start translation, and then it'll generate a code. The students have their laptops, Chromebooks in front of them, they go to the adclearconnect.live/student, and then type in the code the teacher gives them, then they select what language they want to have it translated to. And then from there, they can also get the transcript in English or their native language, and right now, there's 67 different languages to choose from, so you'd have to search pretty hard to find one that's not included in the translation service.
So you could have, like, if you had someone who, you know, spoke Mandarin, and you had someone who spoke Spanish, they could, and she would just teach in English?
Absolutely, I, I love that you asked that question, I love that you pointed that out because the answer is yes, you could have students from all different languages logged into the same session, but hearing it in their native language. So the teacher can be teaching in English, and students are learning in Mandarin, Spanish, Chinese, what have you.
But you don't just have to build that concept back?
Yes, students, that area.
I also like that you said it's transferred to your language, if they're learning English, you're just going to celebrate it, something else.
Exactly, yeah, and, and like I said, they can copy and paste that into like a Word document or a notepad, whatever, to, you know, review those classroom notes later. Love these questions, those are great. So the Epic system, that's our intercom system, that stands for Education, Paging, and the Intercom Communications. The way we, we started doing intercoms was school, school districts came to us and said, hey, we already have your old speakers in our ceilings in the classrooms, why can we not use your old speakers and also use you for an intercom? So that's how we developed our Epic system. To tell you a little bit about this, it works off a kiosk, okay? That kiosk monitor is meant to be stationed in the front office of the school, so we're having a map of the school. So if they need to make an intercom page, they can do so by selecting the entire school and page the entire school, or they can click into a single classroom and page directly in there without interrupting the classrooms next to it. It's supposed to show video of that happening, but that's technology for you. With paging, again, you can select multiple classrooms, so if you just wanted to call into the first grade class, you can do simply that and not bother the second graders, kindergarten, preschool. And then it also offers bell scheduling, this is one of the coolest things that I think is a part of our Epic system, and I really wish you could see the graphic, it might not work, but essentially, you can highlight the whole entire school calendar year and select whatever bell schedule you want it to be on at that time. Let's say you have a snow, like a snow happened, you're on one hour, two hour delay, you can simply come in, click on that date with one hour delay, two hour delay, whatever it is, you can adjust bell schedules on the fly, and the system's intuitive enough to know, okay, they said switch to this schedule, it runs off that bell schedule now. Another thing that can be done, sorry, went too far ahead, from the Epic kiosk, is emergency notifications. So here you see lockdown indicated, so if, you know, the front office staff or someone knows of an emergency and they want to put the school in lockdown, they can do so by clicking that button. That's going to look a little different to people in the classroom, so in the classroom, we have these IT, these are called ITCs, interactive touch controllers, okay? These are going to show lockdown, in the event of lockdown. The teacher can simply go over to the ITC and hit confirm to let the front office know their room's locked down. For teachers who need help, they can press emergency, and I'm going to show you what this looks like from the front office. So, in the event of a lockdown, the rooms that are green, those are the ones that have confirmed that their rooms are locked down. The ones in yellow, that's just saying we're waiting to hear from them at this time. The ones in red, those are the classrooms where the teachers have said, we have an emergency, please men help you, so you know from looking at this exactly where to send help to in the event of an emergency. Once the all-clear is sent out, they'll hear it through the intercom, and they'll also see it on their ITC in their rooms, you are all cleared, please resume normal activity. There's also digital clocks and signage, we call it info view, so it's a great way to have synchronized clocks throughout your school. It's also great for messaging, like welcome back to school, I know you all just had your first day at it last week, so you could have had these messages up on the board welcoming students back. You can provide daily communication, hey, big ball game, big own football game this Saturday, it's a bowl game, make sure you all are there to support the team. But it's also used for emergency messaging, so in the event of a lockdown, in the event of a tornado, a fire, those screens are going to turn to whatever the emergency is so that anyone in the hallways is going to, or common areas of the school is going to see this and know what's going on.
Is this tied to visual services?
Is not, that's a great question, but.
So how many screens, or is that something that each school determines, like different packages, or how many screens are there?
For this, so typically, we want to put these down in hallways and common areas, so like cafeterias, and then down the hallways. Down the hallways, you're going to want double-sided so that it's viewable no matter which way you're walking down the hallway. You really don't need a whole lot of these throughout this school, you just want to make sure your, your hallways and common areas are covered with this. Good question.
Those are bigger than a traditional, digital clock that comes on the side of the wall line, we did a walk through one a week or two ago to look at where we need that coverage. A single side clock.
So where are, like, these sides?
I think they're 22-inch.
Are they on TVs?
They might be big, yeah, they're pretty big, I mean, it's, it's not like overwhelming, like, it's not near the size of. It's bigger than a computer monitor, but yes.
Did you use that? I was watching that, I saw those screens, and they had to jet it out, it's all, they look like a 25, 27-inch TV, large screen.
Yeah, absolutely. And they're mounted to the walls just below the ceiling, so. And they're mounted to the walls just below the ceiling. So you don't have to worry about students jumping up and smacking them. I see what you're, I see what you're. For the kiosk that goes in the front, okay. So this is a great question. I'm really glad you asked this. There's one kiosk that goes in the front office, okay? But the Epic system is still an IT-based program, meaning the principal can be in their office and log into this from their computer. Your SRO, Assistant Principals, whoever you all want to have access to this is entirely up to you. So there's only one kiosk, but there's multiple ways that they could go in and adjust bell schedules or make an announcement.
So they can do anything that happens in the kiosk?
So it's web based?
It is, yes. It's web based, yes. So they can do anything.
So when the kiosk goes down, everything else will still be working?
Yes, yes, it will.
Is the web based kiosk against us pretty common?
Yeah.
Well, you could be, a principal could be, let's say at a conference in Florida and still do the morning announcements, pledge allegiance and everything from their phone.
That could come in handy, probably, I, we, you were at a conference last year or the year before where we thought we might end up having.
Yes, so I was given a touch on this a little bit later, but since the question came up, I'll go ahead and discuss it. There is a mobile app. It's just called the Epic app, okay? And from there, they'll be able to do all the same things that they can do from the kiosk. Now, one thing I'll add, I don't want to get too technical here. Yes, you can do, you can make new pages and everything while not even being at the school. You just have to make sure that those websites like aren't blocked from on your personal device. Any more questions on those?
If the Epic software goes completely down, is there a backup to still be able to use the intercom system in a backup way without having to be online or, or without electricity and cannot get online?
So all of our systems are powered by PoE plus. That's called power over ethernet. So even in the event that your power goes out, this system's still going to work. I mean, most schools, now I can't say for certain, most schools have a battery backup. And that battery backup's good for about forty-five minutes. So even if you all lost all power in your school, you're still going to be able to use your Epic system.
Has your software's been down timed out? So like our, our, I'm the finance officer. There are times that our financial software is, is web based, is on completely down and we are not able to log into or anything else. Have you seen downtime? Cause so how often?
Me personally, I've not seen that, nor have I had another district tell me that that, that's occurred. But that does not mean that it never has, because that's always a possibility. As you know, whenever you're dealing with any technology, there's always that possibility that that could happen. But me personally, I have not, I'm not a witness to it or been told about it. Great question. And this just shows our, how we interact with all these other things. We can work with your base sensors. If you have those gunshot detection, security systems, firearms, surveillance cameras. We can integrate with all of those so that, you know, if a fight broke out in the school and a street hallway, we can integrate with your surveillance cameras. So like when a teacher's calling for help, you can actually get a live view into the hallway to see what's going on.
So this is got a UBS system. Is it a inline or?
Yes.
Is it inline?
Yes.
So the fiber doctors on the network?
Any questions, any more questions on that before I give it to the safety features? So one thing I'm going to ask you all to do really quickly is, I'm sure most of you all have a smartphone, right? Do you know how to make an emergency call from your smartphone? Press and hold the buttons on the side, right? That's exactly how our system works. So it's no different. And it's already on the teachers. If they're wearing their microphones, you might be able to see it. There's buttons on each side, right? Okay, so if they press and hold these buttons for thirty seconds on the side of the microphone, that's going to send a safe alert to the front office in that kiosk. So we call it an instant alert. Again, press and hold thirty seconds. We also, the amplifiers that are on the walls, we want to give visual indicators to the teachers so they know I successfully sent a safe alert. I successfully called for help. When they do that, those lights are going to turn red. That lets them know, okay, my alert was sent to the front office. Here's how that's going to look to the front office. They're on the kiosk, they have a map of the school, whatever room the teacher's in. That room's going to light up red. The person in the front office then has to acknowledge the alert. When they acknowledge the alert, that's to let the teacher know help's on the way. So when they do that, the receiver lights turn green, red, green. Again, sign light indicators to let the teacher know, I called for help and now help is on the way. Cause you don't want students, you know, knowing an emergency was, is happening in some cases. And this is just to let the teacher know this process is underway. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the ITCs, you can actually send a safe alert from here. So if a teacher's standing out in the hallway right outside of a room and these ITCs are typically placed like right by the door to the room, they can simply walk in, hit safe alert and say, oh, there's a medical emergency, a student's having a seizure or there's a fight or some sort of disruption to notify the front office of what's going on. So there's multiple ways to send a safe alert. Obviously, the quickest and easiest is with the microphone that's being worn by them. But they can also choose to do so from the ITCs in the room. I already mentioned this, with your smartphones, that's how our systems work. We modeled it directly after that. We also have mobile alerts. So for you as a district, you get to decide who you want to be notified and when an emergency alert is sent. If you want your principals, vice principals, SROs, any admins, whoever you all want, they're going to get notified of these alerts. And there's three different ways that they can be notified. Being totally away from the kiosk, the Epic app, which I mentioned, they can also get text messages. And they also get emails. So there's three different ways for them to be notified of a safe, safety alert or an emergency. And I believe that is it. So there you see my pretty face wearing this same exact suit. What questions do you have for me about the system in its entirety? I know I've covered a lot and I know I did it pretty fast, which I hope I did it pretty fast. But any questions you all have?
Are, so are there different package options? Each element that you discussed is a different feature, add-on, I guess?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
So what, what is your, like the base? What does that?
So the intergroup system and then the classroom audio and then the safety feature. So that's like, that's the base. Yes, we have stuff you can add from the. Yes, like the translation service. Yes, you can choose that as an add-on. And all of our systems are set up to work with the translation system.
Is it a one-time deal or is there a subscription?
I love that you asked this question. Love it. We are a one-time payment. So once you purchase our systems, they are yours to have. You don't have to keep paying us year after year, okay? Now, the translation service, there is a licensing fee with the translation that does happen every year. That's the only thing that you would ever have to pay annually with us is if you did the translation.
And I would say that probably also that's upgraded.
Yes.
And is it one phase where they're all like, it's not for language?
That's correct. It's, it's one flat fee.
What about maintenance? That really is a purchase.
This is another great question. So we have tech support that's available from five AM till seven PM. So at any, any times you're going to be in the school, we have a tech support bot that you can call. I'm also a short drop away, so if there's anything that I can do to help, I'm more than willing to do so. Included in the purchase of our systems is professional development and training, okay? So I'm, I'm going to come out and someone else will probably come help me. Train all of your teachers on how to use the microphone, what are, you know, best practices, how to send a safe alert, when to send a safe alert. So we're going to make sure you're trained up on this. And on top of that, we also send four people to our headquarters in Utah so that they are trained on the backend of this Epic kiosk, okay? Cause there's a lot of ins and outs in that when it comes to changing the screens, the info view screens that I talked about. They go there, they're going to learn how to actually troubleshoot as well as make adjustments to your system. Another cool thing I'll add, you can choose what place, like when you do your bells. So if you want to make it like the Jeopardy theme song in between classes, you know, or Saved by the Bell theme song, whatever you all want to do, you can make it a more fun learning environment for your students. So this is, our system is truly customizable to what you as a district want in many, many ways.
I know you use the analogy of a cell phone for the safety there, but I mean, is it in a sense like are there going to be continual like software updates that are going to go on and that sort of thing and all of that and?
There are, there are updates to the Epic kiosk, yes. And we actually just did the most recent update. So it's at its newest version like right now. I wouldn't anticipate another update happening for a little bit of time. They don't happen often. There are updates. When the updates occur, we walk you through the process of updating everything. If we need to send additional hardware, we're not going to ask you to pay us more money because, hey, our systems have to be updated. But we need you to pay us more money before we can update your systems. We're not going to do that. We'll update your systems and we'll send you whatever hardware that you all need for the update at no cost.
Do you figure like the light up the screens are? What would you say?
So the Epic kiosks, those screens are good for five to seven years. Same with the batteries and the microphone. So all of this stuff is going to be good for at least five years. And then the wire, the speakers and the wiring, that's good for like thirteen years maybe? Like it's, it's good for a long time.
Speakers, you got to amplify our H1, there's speakers in H1. Folks, that is hard to wire anything.
Yes, yep. The speakers are wired back to the amplifier.
What about any kind of system maintenance in a panel, sometimes communicated, but probably not, wouldn't be here in school hours?
Correct, yes, yeah, absolutely.
So is it, is there warranty involved then?
There is warranty, yes. For anything that occurs within the first year, we're going to replace that for you. And typically, you know, we're just going to, when we come out and install our systems, we then have field engineers come out and physically test every single classroom, every hallway. They're going to test everything to make sure it's working correctly. If something's not working correctly at that point, then we're going to go ahead and put in a, a request to have that piece of equipment shipped back and a new one sent out. Great question.
On the object, it's probably, probably kind of a silly question, but I mean, we're talking about elementary school kids. So some kid throws, you know, their apple juice at one of these screens and breaks the screen. We just can't replace just that screen.
That's correct. That's correct, yeah. I will say that these screens, you know, if the apple juice were to get into like where the PoE is plugged into, that might cause some issues, but if they just like threw it, they hit the screen and splashed all over the screen, wipe it with a paper towel or something to do. Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, we knew that we had to make it a pretty resilient product because when you're putting stuff in the school, you do always run the risk of students trying to jump up and hit it or throw things at it. So that's a legitimate concern and those are things that really do happen. So we had to kind of plan ahead for that and make this a very durable product.
So the individual screens in the classroom, like ITCs, do they have like a walk-in functionality?
Then you asked this.
I mean, that would be, you'd see that, that you want to touch everything?
Yes. So you can actually choose to pink code protect those little screens in the classroom so that, you know, if even in an elementary school, students line up at the door, you know, to go to lunch or go to the restroom, what have you, what's stopping that from precedent, right? Exactly. It's natural. And any kid, myself included, I would have been one president, no doubt. So you can, to get to your question, pink code protect it. You can do a two-digit pink code, four-digit pink code. Typically, what I suggest is using the last four digits of the phone number for the school. But again, you can be more creative than that if you want. I don't, I don't think elementary school kids will know that, but maybe. I hear you have a question.
Paul had, I hear a lot of sales pitches and I'm real skeptical about sales pitches a lot of times. So I like to see it in action. And I told Watson and the rest of the audio enhancement crew, I said, I want to see it in action. And Jefferson County has the Epic system plus the pilot school, one of the few pilot schools around the nation, only one in Kentucky. And it has the translation piece. And I think I did share that with you all that once I saw it. But seeing the safety piece, that kiosk and then of course the assistant principals and principals that have to have that on their phone. And he didn't show you, one part that was one of my favorite parts is like on that map and there's a red square, you know, when it's locked down, oh, there's problems there, you can select that and write out with the closest camera so that all links up to your security cameras. As an assistant principal, principal, I can click on that button and I can see right there in the hallway outside of that classroom. So it also ties into the security cameras. So that was one of the, that's probably one of my favorite pieces. Two being the translation piece. And then three, you know, our King Little School, I already got, they put that in our sixth grade teacher's classroom as well as a couple of the classrooms this summer in the library. And I'm already getting feedback. I read, read an email and Mr. Phillips here, an email that our, we, Mr. Bryant, the principal, got a, from one of the teachers who had been saying that how much the kids enjoy it, they, they like the mic where they can have their voice heard in the classroom. And then she said at the very end, the best thing of all, it saved my voice. And I can go home with a voice after school's out instead of, you know, doing my teacher voice for six periods or five periods a day. It saves, it saves their voices as well as teachers. And I told, I told them, I said, as an old basketball coach, I would have loved to have this in the gym for practices all those years because I, many, many nights, weeks, I went home with a horse voice in the gym. This one put it in the gym as well.
One more thing I want to add on to what you said, yes, you can actually view the security cameras close to the incidents occur. I told you about situations where a teacher did this from inside their classroom, right? Well, you all know emergencies don't just happen in the classroom. They happen in the hallways, in the bus lines, in the cafeteria, in the exterior of the building. If there's a playground. So we have safe extenders that we put throughout the school. So even if the teachers are not in their classroom and they're out in the hallway and they press for help, it's going to do a bid diagram of where that, that teacher is in the building. So you, you have an approximate location, you know, they're in the, this stairwell of the building or this hallway of the building and it'll show you where they are in the school. And that refreshes every thirty seconds. So if this is an event where it's moving, then it's going to follow them throughout the school. Any other questions?
He was really, really, what sold me is going to see it in action in Jefferson County. And it was, it's really unbelievable to see. And then again, one of the questions that gets asked a lot of time in those meetings is that Watson weren't that, what about if he teaches in multiple classrooms, like highs or teachers going to different classrooms? You just hit the pair in that, that microphone. He doesn't have to take off with the dual mic. So he just works everywhere, hits a pair on that.
So on those wall, wall mount sites, you see in the classrooms, there's a blink and mic button. You just press that and then there's two buttons you press and hold simultaneously on here and then you make.
All I'm saying is, is either if you could blink on all of that, is it indicating when you switch classes or not a teacher?
No, not, not necessarily. Like, so some schools choose to assign these to specific classrooms in which this microphone does not leave classroom one-on-one. Others typically assign it to teachers, so that teacher's responsible for their microphone. And if they teach in multiple classrooms, they're going to take that microphone with them from classroom to classroom and just sync up. And if you all were curious, there's a lot of other districts around the state that use us. You mentioned Jefferson, Fayette, Boone, Johnson County, Lincoln County. So I know Lincoln County is just, you know, not, not too far from here.
Paul Marks, what if someone goes bathroom down?
Yes, yes. So when I come out and do my teacher trainings, now listen, these microphones are good for up to sixty to seventy-five feet away from the classroom and the. for up to sixty to seventy-five feet away from the classroom and the receiver. So if the teacher has a bathroom nearby, and they go and they forget to mute their microphone, and they do their business, whoever's in the classroom is going to be able to hear that. So it's my job, it's my job to come out and train the teachers on, hey, the mute button on here that I pressed earlier, that's your best friend.
Mute button has to be the teacher's best friend. So Mr. Blue, it's not...
Well, I talked to Trace Creek and Ross Tarrant and Fay Electric, we've done a lot of hours of discussions over this, and over the last few months, we've been trying to get to this point where I get prices on taking out, and I call it the old-school PA, or the, just the traditional PA that we had in most schools, and adding this enhanced piece of the Epic system. So we finally got prices, and, you know, on nine L, that price is on there, they're quoted, and at nine M, the PR-17, that is getting a credit, I think it was a hundred and five thousand something for the credit for the old-school PA system, as I call it, so they're credited that back. There is one piece in there that we're talking about, which I've asked both of them, Trace Creek and Ross Tarrant, have you ever done this mid-stream of a construction project? Just taken a timeout, taken something out, get to the mid, and we've never done, you all have never done that before. So this is learning, we're learning, all of us, during this piece. But I did talk to the state building inspector today, and I told him what we're doing. And I said, I want to know how long it takes to get permits, because I know there's, do we work under the permits that we already have, and is Fay Electric going to charge us money for that? I had a really good conversation with him for about thirty minutes today, and it sounds a lot easier after, I felt a lot better after talking to him about how quickly, because of his low voltage and was not using, was using low voltage fire, POE he was talking about. And then the state inspector gave us the steps, which I shared with Audio Enhancement, and you all approved this, on how to get a permit. He thinks because it's low voltage, they're going to come back and say that you don't even need a permit, you can just put it in. If there is a permit, it's a very minimal cost, he said within a month or below something. And when I say very minimal cost, I'm talking about a few hundred dollars, is what his exact words were. So he said, it's any more than that, and I'll build it to you right after that. So I felt a lot better, because initially, if you see the recommended motion, initially I was thinking that we were going to have to go under a permit, building permit of Fay Electric, and we've asked Fay Electric what they're going to charge, and they're going to charge fifteen percent as their overhead, two percent for inspections, which is seventeen percent. That's where that seventeen percent soft cost comes into play. So with the recommended motion, you can see there, we can still do it that way, and give me the flexibility to make sure we work with the building inspector to keep everything on time. We've got, it sounds like we've got plenty of time, after talking to the building inspector, to get this, it only takes them a couple of weeks to put this system in. It sounds like it's going to be a lot cheaper than I originally had thought, it's about the install part, the soft, the soft cost that are on there, so. It really depends on how you all, if you all want to make a motion, whether you just say, we'll accept this proposal, and I'll just work, I'll work on it on the backside, we're trying to get with the state inspector, trying to get the permit if we need one, to put this system in. And then if we can't do that, we can come back September, and I can ask you. If they're saying, oh, no, you've got to go through Fay Electric to get that, we can come back and ask you for the seventeen percent, or you can just say authorize, kind of like what you did with the SLAM, you know, where you authorized thirty-two thousand, negotiated down to twenty.
Contingent law.
Contingent law, so. You all know that I'll try to get it the cheapest possible way, so I'll try to work quickly, I know the time is of the essence, but I'll try to get it to where we're either have a really cheap permit or no permit, and I'll go to the state inspector. Again, I feel much better after having that conversation with him today. And this is, I mean, this is an expensive system, but the safety piece is worth every penny of this when I saw it. The translation piece makes it even better. The academic piece with instruction, with all the kids being able to hear the teacher equally and hearing the student when they pass the student microphone. And then a better one that Jefferson County didn't have was that little blue softball that's a microphone that they pass around. I got to see that in action as well. How they toss them around, it just, it makes engagement in the classroom so much better. I, it's just, I was so seeing it in action, so I just think, I mean, but you have to pay it, it's not, it's not the same price as the old-school PAs, I mean, or so.
So are we, what, what this proposal is, is going to have lights for every teacher that we're expecting to have as of today?
We took a couple hours to walk through the school, with the project manager, Audio Enhancement's project manager, and the electrician, Watson, Watson, we went to middle school. And they trained, with their teachers, to train them how to use their new system down there. But we covered every single area that we thought we would need a microphone, and we then would go.
Do you just charge those smartphones every night?
Yes, that's a great question. So these are charged with USB-C, which is what you use to charge an iPhone with. They cannot be overcharged, so they have a smart charger. And one thing I want to show you, so every teacher would get this box right here, okay? This box has the student microphone, and then if I wasn't wearing the teacher one, it would be in here as well. It also comes with charging accessories. Here's the cool part, the back of this box, this little sticker, you poke it out, you can run the charging cords through there and have your mic sitting in here, and just plug them in every day, when the teacher leaves, let them charge overnight, it's not going to hurt them.
If you go to King Middle School now, that's, they got the box, and that's how they charge them now.
Yeah, so you all could actually see this system, you know, in action at King Middle School. They just have the classroom audio, but...
Anything else? Okay, any other questions? Can I have a motion to accept Audio Enhancement proposal and authorize a seventeen percent for soft costs? For the inspection? Mr. Frances, a motion, can I have a second? Mr. Vander Sack, a vote please?
District one, Amy Frances.
Yes.
District two, Amy Mark.
Yes.
District three, Philip Green.
Yes.
District four, Philip Rood.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. The next motion is, is going to be Mr. Rivers, who is here making the argument, sets the proposal. This will be cred at the back, old school PA system. Can I have a motion for a second?
Make a motion.
Mr. Vander Sack, make a motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Vander Sack, a vote please.
District one, Amy Frances.
Yes.
District two, Amy Mark.
Yes.
District three, Philip Green.
Yes.
District four, Philip Rood.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes.
Final roll call, but the sound is scary for a lot of people.
That's going to increase their percentage on change. There's a wall. That is...
I'm not costing you any money.
Oh, thank God.
Most of this is, well, most of it is because we have, it's obviously one that every meeting feels like, so I go ahead and find other itty-bitty stuff that I go and fix every time. So we have the outline of basically what is being fixed, there are some language changing, and it outlines the pages for those. There are two stipend additions on page thirteen, reminding that screen thing, so nothing in our pocket for that screen, but it's completely. A rule of the league school psychologist position also on page thirteen. Admission assistant, boy scout coach, admission assistant, girl scout coach, are page seventeen, but those are being paid by the booster club. And other than that, it's all language changes, auditions, and that. Any questions?
No questions, we have a motion for approval.
I'll make a question.
This is hard to motion, can I have a second?
Third.
Mr. Vander Sack, we vote all this?
District one, Amy Frances. Yes. District two, Amy Mark.
Yes.
District three, Randy Phillips.
Yes.
District four, Philip Rood.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes.
Uh, no further business, can I have a motion for a German?
Just a second, one question for you. What if, what if we have three teachers teaching in this area? They can all go onto the same system together?
Yeah, that's another great question. So you can have up to three microphones active at the same time. So yes, if you have three teachers in a single area...